Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our training session here this morning. We do have the option to go in camera or not. At this point in time, I don't believe there's any reason to go in camera. So this will not be going into camera unless somebody vehemently objects to that, wants to raise that point. It is education. So I really don't believe we need to be in camera. Anyway, so I'm gonna call a meeting order and we'll start with a moment of reflection. Thank you, everyone. And if I could have a motion, or actually before that, if you have any pecuniary interest, you can state so now or any point in time through the meeting. And if I could have a motion, we'll confirm the agenda. Moved by Councillor Callum, second by Councillor Wilhelm, I believe that is, he's got his hand over his face. Okay. Any comments or questions, those in favor? Gary, thank you very much. And just before we get started, we have John Masgren here, our Integrity Commissioner. And what I'm gonna do is just quickly do a quick roll call. So I have Mayor Ron Agates from Perth East. I have Councillor Matt Duncan from North Perth. Mayor Bob Wilhelm from Perth South. Councillor Doug Callum from North Perth. I have Mayor Todd Kassenberg from North Perth. I have Mayor Walter McKenzie from West Perth. I have Councillor Daryl Hurlick from Perth East. I have Councillor Sue Orr from Perth South. And I have Marion from HR. And I have Justin, I believe is up there, from EDC. John McClellan from EDC. Is that Sarah on the left-hand side? There's Sarah Franklin's there. And I had Sally Blankdough and Steve Drake Blankdough. There's Steve Drake, he's live. And so that's partly it for, just so everybody knows who's all involved here today. Now, we are recording this and we'll post it later, but we're not live streaming. So anyway, I'm just gonna give a quick intro to John before we start. He's a partner with Airdan Burles LLP. He's a Certified Specialist in Municipal Law, Local Government, Land Use Planning and Development. He's an adjunct professor at Ausgood Hall Law School since 2006. He's published, or author of five published books in municipal law and planning. And he is more importantly, the Integrity Commissioner for the county of Perth since 2017 and the township of Perth South since 2019. So I'll let you take it away, John. And you want us to, oh, and I have Corey Cross on there now, I believe, too. From the county. So I'll let you take it away, John. And Sean, do you want to fire it up as your shared screen again? Because I believe John wants that.
Yeah, John should be able to share it.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. Warden, thank you very much for the introduction. Good morning, council and everybody else. It's a pleasure to be here. Let me see if I can share my screen. It worked before. We'll see if we can work it again. Let's see if I can get the one that everybody can see here. Is that working from your end?
Perfect, from my, from my spot.
Terrific. So thank you very much this morning. I want to extend my thanks to both Lori and Tyler at the county for setting this up today. As you indicated, Warden, I've been the Integrity Commissioner for the county since 2017. I believe it was towards the end of 2017. And then at the beginning of 2019, I also became the IC for the township. So I'm glad to see that this representative is involved. And you can see on my slide deck, I've managed to include both parties there. I have two slide presentations today. I'm gonna divide them up neatly. The first slide will be just what's on your screen right now. The Code of Conduct and Integrity Commissioner. I'll talk about why you have codes of conduct. What's supposed to be in a code of conduct? How it operates, how it's supposed to be interpreted and applied? What my role is as the Integrity Commissioner? Because I think that's very key for you to understand what my role is. I haven't had a great deal of involvement with either of the municipalities till now, which is really good news. In many municipalities, it's been, it's been quite an ordeal. And we've been very busy with, unfortunately, a lot of investigations, which is the reason why you don't want the Integrity Commissioner. And I'll explain a little bit of that later. So I'll take that and speak about, again, a code of conduct, my role in it. And that will be the first part of the presentation. And then the second part will be on the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, a very important statute that's the cornerstone, really, of the accountability regime for members of council and members of local boards here in Ontario. So I divided it up into two and I'll have a different slide deck. The slide decks will be available to you afterwards. Unlike my co-presenter today, the absolutely wonderful Debbie Wilcox, I have a lot of text on my slides. And the reason I do that is some of these have been used at my law school classes. And what I do is I produce them in such a way that will give you is some information that you can take away without just having to listen to me. So hopefully, even if you may have missed something, and I'll try to, what I'll try to do is refine the slides and give you maybe some stories, some background, some illustrations of the issues. But Debbie's got her, her slide deck is filled with a lot of pictures, which is the way you're supposed to go. I haven't quite gone that route. I would be pleased to have questions throughout. I have no problem with that. Except that I only have a small band on my, on my screen because I have most of the slides on my screen. So if anyone would like to, and maybe I'll ask your indulgence, Warden, would you prefer that questions are saved till the end, maybe, of each presentation? Or are you okay if questions are asked throughout?
It doesn't really matter to me, John. Like, sometimes if you ask a question right then and there, you get more out of it. So perhaps if somebody had a question, if they could maybe just perhaps unmute and speak up? Because I can't see more than you can, so if that works for you, that works for me.
It certainly works for me, Warden. Actually, I would prefer it. It makes it a little more interactive. So I'll try to certainly leave time for my co-presenter because her, her talk is going to be very interesting and very important for you. So I'm trying not to eat up all the time today. But please, if you should have any questions, do not hesitate to ask what all I can ask. Please speak up so that way I know that someone's asking a question. So without further ado, I'm gonna run through the slide deck. And let's see if I can get it to work. I can. We're gonna start with the Declaration of Office. As you know, when you become a member, elected representative, you are asked to take a declaration of office before you take your seat on either the Township Council or on County Council, or in cases of many of you, both, both of them. Section 232 of the Municipal Act requires that you take an oath of office, make a declaration of office. And there are four declarations that you swear and promise to. And I've got them up on the screen. You probably know them well. Some of you have been council members before, so you've had to do this probably multiple times. You'll see that the first one talks about truly faithfully and impartially exercising your office in the best of your knowledge and ability. And that, quite honestly, fits in with the authority for codes of conduct. The second one there, number two, that you've not received any payment or reward for acting in a biased, corrupt, or improper purpose, are really geared towards the criminal code offenses for conduct. As you probably are aware, depending on how egregiously bad, as some members' conduct may be, it may lead to criminal code charges and convictions. The ones that you usually see are fraud, municipal corruption, and breach of trust. And I've had some experience with those. I'm not a criminal lawyer, but my, my work as an Integrity Commissioner sometimes veers me into the area of criminality and I have to be involved sometimes in that. So number two tends to speak towards the criminal code provisions. Number one speaks to matters in the Municipal Act, Codes of Conduct, the Municipal Elections Act, probably the municipal freedom of information, protection of privacy, and so on. Number three is a direct matter, and I'll round back up to it. But it speaks properly to the MCIA, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And you actually swear a declaration that you will disclose any pecuniary interest. And that's really key because it is a personal obligation of each of you to know what the act says. You're swearing that you're going to do something under that act. You know, logic would dictate that what that means is you're going to at least read the act and be aware of its provisions. I have a court case that's coming up, I believe, very early June. And I believe one of the defenses is going to be from the respondent member of council is that she really just wasn't aware of what, of what was in the act, which in my view is bogus because not only did she receive training multiple times by her municipality, but she also swore a declaration that she would abide by it. And how could you swear a declaration if you don't even go and read the act and purport to understand it? So Declaration of Office, you'll see how it gives some, some principle to what I'm gonna talk about in Codes of Conduct. So Code of Conduct, they're mandatory now here in Ontario. Every municipality must have a code of conduct that governs the behavior, seeks to regulate the conduct of members of council, but also members of local boards. And I've listed there where the county as well as the township first established their codes of conduct. I'll be honest, and since this, this is now in an open session, it's probably good because I will be recommending, and I have in the past suggested that there should be modifications to both codes. It's not that they're improper, invalid, illegal in any way, but I think they could certainly use some sprucing up and some modernization. So I will recommend that again. And I can do so because we're not talking in a closed session where you can't materially advance the decision-making of council. So I will be recommending that. We probably, though, will leave them off until the beginning of the next term of council because really you only have a year plus to go. And it's probably appropriate that these two councils leave the codes in now. But maybe I'm at least piquing your interest as to some future modifications to both codes. What is a code of conduct? I quoted from my good friend Gregory Levine, who's done a ton of work on this area. He was the prototype of an ombudsman, of an integrity commissioner. And he really says, well, what they're there for, the intention is to promote integrity in public affairs and to provide a guide for what is acceptable behavior. Both a guide to the members who are subject to it, but also to someone who may want to question the behavior, the conduct of a member of council. I've often said, it is not an encyclopedia. My, my good friend Janice Leeper, who was the ACME of Integrity Commissioners, you may recognize her name. She was in the news about seven years ago when she butted heads with then-Mayor Rob Ford. She'd always, we would speak and present together often, and she would always say it's not a cookbook. You can't go to the code of conduct and expect to find every situation and say, ah, there it is. That, that's what, that's what I'm supposed to be doing. Or conversely say, well, it's not, not there. I can't find my specific, particular situation, so therefore the code doesn't cover it. Uh-uh. The code sets general standards, general parameters for acceptable behavior. What is and what isn't acceptable behavior? I've often said that a code should be credible, it should be useful, and it should be functional. It should carry out its purpose, in other words. There are mandatory subject matters that have to be addressed in each code. In the recent amendments to the Municipal Act by Bill 68 that all came in force on March the 1st, 2019, the section 232.2 that talks about the establishments of codes of conduct also reserved onto the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing the authority to prescribe subject matters. This was new, and I think the minister did this because the minister was aware of a number of skeletal types of codes of conduct throughout the province that really didn't say much. So the minister has passed a regulation, made a regulation, 5518, and it prescribes four subject matters that have to be included in each code. It doesn't say how the conduct with respect to these four prescribed subject matters is to be done. It just says that they have to be covered. So the first one, gifts benefits in hospitality. The second one is respectful conduct, something that I see more and more and more every day with the types of complaints that my office is getting from various municipalities when we see them as Integrity Commissioners. The third one, confidential information, which is aimed towards protecting confidential information and precluding its disclosure in an improper method by any member of council. And finally, the use of property of the municipality or of the local board. So those are four prescribed subject matters that have to be in every code of conduct. I pulled the county's code. I took a look at it the other day. And I'm not going to talk about it to any significant detail today. But I wanted to just give you the highlights. I have it up on my screen, on a separate screen here. And as I said, it could use a bit of a refresher. And for the township, if I could just say this, it probably would be nice if, if the township and the county would agree to a refresh of both their, of both their codes. And it would be great if they could be aligned. That way, for any members of both councils, the two codes would be aligned. And sometimes you don't find this because you have different Integrity Commissioners, different codes of conduct in, in the two levels of government in the two, the two structure, the two peer structure here in Ontario. So it would be great if we could have an alignment. And I'd be pleased to work with, with both clerks in helping them to the extent that you would like me to be involved in helping with any updates. So here's the county code. I'm not gonna go into it in any great detail. It provides generally for the purpose of the code. It sets out a number of definitions so that terms that are used throughout the code are consistent. And someone could just go to it right away and find out, what does good faith mean? Or what is hospitality? What are we talking about when we talk about hospitality? Things like that, gifts and benefits, define terms so they can be used and everyone can understand what they are. The code then also sets out standards of conduct, you know, general standards. Interestingly enough, it does talk about conduct at meetings, which is, which is a little odd. You would think that your procedural bylaw would cover, would cover that directly. And there's, so it's, it's really interesting. Many Integrity Commissioners, including myself, will not often weigh in if there's been, you know, a bit of maybe lack of decorum at a council meeting. Most Integrity Commissioners, myself included, will treat matters like that as being within the purview and the jurisdiction of the chair to control. And those are usually covered by the procedural bylaw. Integrity Commissioners have, however, weighed in when the conduct becomes, well, let's say, a little bit more egregiously terrible, and will potentially look at something that happened at a meeting of council or a committee or a meeting of a local board. And there's various reasons for that. I can give you one example. There was a Code of Conduct investigation that I did three or two years ago at the beginning of the term of a council. It was almost an entirely new council. There were nine members. Seven of them were entirely new. One had only served half the term, the previous term. So it was a very, very neophyte council, very new, largely inexperienced with a head of council who had never been an elected representative before. And at the very first council meeting, the very first proper council meeting, the, the mayor proceeded to cross-examine her own chief planner while he was reporting on, albeit a somewhat controversial topic. But she proceeded to cross-examine him, much to his surprise. And then when she finished dressing him down, because remember, you have all the power because you have the last word, not staff, she proceeded to say that his report was worthless, and she tore it up at the council meeting. Two complaints by two separate people were filed with me, and I decided that I would investigate. And there was a reason also to do that. I believe the chair looked the other way because the chair, I found out afterwards, was quite aligned with the member of council. So I decided to weigh in and found that the mayor had acted inappropriately and in contravention of proper decorum and proper respect for staff. Remember, it was her chief planner. This person is a, is a registered professional planner, has professional qualifications and their own code of conduct. And she's ripping up the report in front of everyone, on camera, too. Anyway, that led me down a whole other path, which I won't go into today. But it just shows you the precariousness, a proof to me, the precariousness of sometimes wanting to do my job. I can see that this municipality is counting the days for my term to expire because they don't like the fact that I'm actually standing up to what I believe is an abdication of responsibility of the council to act appropriately. And it's continued from that moment. So conduct at meetings, generally I don't weigh in. There are matters of general integrity that are set out. Discrimination and harassment, something that I continue to see a lot. And that's unfortunate. A great deal of the complaints that seem to come in these days to our firm are either from other members of council who are calling out their fellow members for acting inappropriately, i.e. intimidating, bullying, harassing their staff, or doing the same with respect to other members of council. Or it's staff themselves who are, who are writing in. There was a recent report that we did where we recommended the highest penalty that we've ever done in my office. And I've been doing, I've been an Integrity Commissioner since 2014. And that related to eight separate complaints against a single member of council for having essentially harassed, intimidated, and bullied six members of senior staff and, and others that didn't come forward, but that two council members took on the responsibility to speak on behalf of some of these other staff members. That led to, remember, they're separate complaints. That led to penalties that totaled a suspension of pay for 210 days. So two-thirds of the year, this council member is now essentially serving the public interest at no cost because he's doing it for free because of the penalties. We also recommended a number of remedial measures, and I can speak to those a little bit later when I get to the end of this presentation. There's also matters dealing with staff and council relations, use of municipal property. And you'll see, I've highlighted those. And the reason I highlighted those, well, not highlighted them, but I set them out in red, is because those relate to the provincially prescribed and mandated subject matters that are supposed to be addressed in the code. Confidentiality, a very, very important things. I've often said, probably before harassment and intimidation of staff became such a big issue, I often said that one of the worst things that you can do as a member of council is to breach confidentiality of the information that you're receiving. For instance, in a closed setting of a meeting, where you're only getting that by virtue of your office because you will be making decisions. So confidential information is very important and it's covered there. By the way, I should say, just going back one slide, staff and council relations and the whole issue of harassment and intimidation. The Minister of Municipal Affairs, just I think three weeks ago, four weeks ago now, issued a notice to key stakeholders indicating that they would, that the office would be looking at and seeking consultation on enhancing the enforcement of codes of conduct with respect to the harassment of staff because it has become an issue across the province. Probably the best-known example is not in your geographic area, but it would relate to the matter that's been ongoing now for some time in the city of Ottawa with respect to councillor Rick Shirelli, who was found in five separate instances, five separate complaints, to have essentially sexually harassed two persons who worked as his assistant and three job applicants. The Integrity Commissioner there called atrociously bad behavior. And he found that there was a contravention that merited the maximum penalty in each of those cases. There is also a private members bill right now at the legislature where there's, again, an attempt to enhance the authority of an Integrity Commissioner to bring someone to court if the conduct is so egregiously bad that perhaps it warrants removal from office. I don't know what the chances of that legislation being passed, it is a private members bill. But there is a groundswell of support now for these types of initiatives and a greater adherence to matters of enforceability dealing with codes of conduct. There is questions about decisions of council where, well, once council makes a decision, it's spoken. And while members may have disagreed with the decision, all members are supposed to not disparage the decision, nor belittle members who have made the decision. Maybe if it was not to the liking of the particular member who may have voted against it. But that, that is something that is found in many, many codes and increasingly is something that we're looking at. Incompatible activity, conflicts of interest, and conflicts of interest, I'll just highlight there. It's not supposed to deal with pecuniary interest. That's covered by the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Pecuniary meaning financial. The conflict of interest that a code is supposed to primarily regulate is conflicts of interest that are not financial in nature. So they would be private or personal conflicts of interest. For instance, your best friend is coming before council for some sort of approval. It may not have an impact on any of you, but she may have been your best friend in, in high school. She may have been your maid of honor, may have stood as godmother to your kids, for instance. That person has a close, personal relationship, and you might be more, you know, more tending towards favoring them. So the code is supposed to govern non-pecuniary interest. And if you are all aware, there was a recent judicial inquiry report out of the town of Collingwood recently where Justice Morocco, sitting as the judicial inquiry officer, indicated that the scope of conflicts of interest in the municipal realm are much broader than just what the municipal conflict of interest says. And he is recommending not only non-pecuniary, personal, private interests be covered in codes of conduct for conflicts of interest, but also apparent or perceived conflicts of interest. So he's going a little bit beyond, and there is some case law on that. The common law seems to indicate that there may be a common law obligation. They haven't, for the greatest part, been, have found their way into codes of conduct yet. I've been a little skeptical, and I haven't yet recommended them. But Val Jepson, who was the Integrity Commissioner of Sutro, wrote an incredibly great piece, academic piece, on why codes of conduct should include apparent and perceived conflicts of interest and how the Sinclair Lewis inquiry, public inquiry at the federal level really puts in place a regime where these should be covered in codes of conduct, including local codes of conduct. Acceptance of gifts, benefits and hospitality are covered by the code. And then there's matters dealing with breach of policy and so on. So let's just... So let's just, a very quick overview of one of the codes. And I didn't go through the Townships Code, but it has similar provisions. And as I said, both of them are in some need of a refresh. A complaint protocol. And interestingly enough, I'm not aware that either code has a very robust complaint protocol. But it's part of the statutory scheme. That's been said by the only divisional court judicial review decision on a code of conduct complaint, report, findings and decision of a council. It said that a complaint protocol is part of the statutory scheme. It's really an important aspect of it. What a complaint protocol does is it sets out the process and procedure for how a complaint should be filed and submitted and how the matter is then to be considered by the integrity commissioner and then reviewed and investigated. It sets things like timelines. It includes forms, which both of your codes have. Talks about filings, matters of classification, intake procedures that integrity commissioners should do to look at it. We always initially look at all complaints when they come in and we do an intake analysis. That essentially means is, has it been properly filed? For instance, does it need an affidavit or a statutory declaration to support it? If there's not one there, that's a problem. Has it been signed? For instance, as the protocol says, it has to be signed by an individual, okay? Has it been submitted by a person? Right? You get all these questions. And then you have more significant questions. For instance, is it even a matter within the jurisdiction of the integrity commissioner? We get a lot of complaints from people who don't like the decision that council has made. And what they'll often do is that they don't have a ready mechanism perhaps, or an inexpensive, inexpensive way of challenging it. So what they'll do is they'll file a complaint. And usually, the poor council member who's moved the matter forward or spoke in favor of whatever was enacted, may be the person on the firing line. So we often get this and we often will summarily dismiss a complaint on the basis that you're not really complaining about anyone's conduct here. You're actually really complaining about the decision that council has made. And that's not proper for a code of conduct complaint. It can be against more than one member of council. And I have seen one that's come in and had basically thought about this problem and said, "Well, I'm still going to name each member of council and say that they did something wrong." It didn't go very far in our office. It talks about things like, for instance, is there a fee that has to be charged and paid before the code complaint can be filed? What about summary dismissal? In my view, the integrity commissioner has an inherent authority to summary dismiss. But I really, really like to include in a complaint protocol, something that backstops that. Often, a complainant will be very upset if they spent time filing a complaint, all of a sudden to see us turn it around in a few days, to say, "I'm sorry, we're not proceeding with this because we're summarily dismissing it." And then they'll be very upset and then they'll say, "Well, what gives you the authority to do that?" And then rather than wire ourselves with a complaint to the internal ombudsman or a judicial review application, it's always nicer to have something in the code or in the complaint protocol that covers that. And then it talks about a review of the code, a response, right? You as a member of council may have a complaint filed against you. Well, the procedural fairness and natural justice would dictate that you should be provided with an opportunity to respond to that. And so complaint protocols often have an ability for you to respond within a set timeframe. So these things don't stay outstanding, you know, for a long time. And then possibly an opportunity for the complainant to see the response in order to give a reply. It usually ends there. Occasionally, there might be a "sir" reply, which is another opportunity for the complainant to give another, in a sense, a counter-response to the reply that comes in. And that's unusual and it's to the discretion generally of the integrity commissioner. And then what reports have to be made. Is there going to be a report? When does it go to council? What recommendations does the integrity commissioner make? The completion transmission, who helps with this, who puts it on, who receives it? When does council look at it? And importantly, how is the report published or how is it disseminated publicly? So all of those things are complaint protocol matters, which I find very important. Now, I'm going to switch. Are there any questions, by the way, on anything that I've said so far? Does anyone have any questions? Nope?
Yes, actually, if I might.
Yes, Mayor Castenburgh.
Thank you, through the warden as well. I'd like to know a little bit about whether there's a comparable act or provisions for the provincial government and for MPPs.
Yes, through you, warden, to councillor Castenburgh. There are, there is, there are corresponding legislation. I apologize, I cannot remember the name of the federal, but there is one. And there's a federal integrity commissioner. But there's also the municipal, the, sorry, the Members Integrity Act at the provincial level. And David Wake has been the longstanding integrity commissioner at the province. And you can, I believe both of them have separate websites and you can look up their rulings. At the federal level, of course, you had the issue with NSC Lavalin and Justin Trudeau and some other matters that the prime minister's been involved with that have led to integrity commissioners' reports and complaints. And at the provincial level, I believe Premier Ford has been subject to several, as well as other members. Now, I can't tell you though, if the Members Integrity Act has a great similarity to codes of conduct that I've seen throughout the province. There certainly is an overlap, but I don't think that there is a striking similarity between the provisions. But they're supposed to encompass the same things. I haven't had a great opportunity to have to look at them. But I did notice recently, because this question came up. I was representing an integrity commissioner. And the other side, the member who was subject to the integrity commissioner's report and findings, wanted to cross-examine the integrity commissioner. And there's a provision in the municipal act that says the integrity commissioner is not a compelable nor competent witness. So you can't, you can't cross-examine an integrity commissioner. And that's also at the provincial level. The same wording is found at provincial level. But that's my extent, that's the extent of my knowledge, councillor Castenburgh, as to the similarities. But there are comparable statutes that cover off the integrity and ethics at both those levels.
And can I ask one more question? And the question pertains to this timeline of six weeks that is in, I guess, the act. I think it's higher than the code of conduct with regards to the timeline within which a complaint may be filed. Can you comment on that?
Yes, the, through you, warden. The, I can't remember, and perhaps you know better than I do right now, councillor, the six-week timeframe may have had its genesis from the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, which has a six-week period in which someone can file an application, or now file an application, sorry, file an application with courts or file an application with the integrity commissioner. In most cases, codes of conduct have a larger timeframe for filing a complaint. I've seen ranges from six weeks because some just piggyback on to what the MCIA says. I have seen them range from two, three, six months. Some have no timeframe, which I think is a real problem. And I would never recommend a code that has no timeframe. But the one that I'm, the one that I'm most familiar with and the one that I typically recommend and draft is a six-month timeframe. I find that six weeks is just sometimes too quick. But I think, as I said, that's probably piggybacking on to the six-week period under section eight of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
Thank you. Can I redirect that question to the clerk? Perhaps the clerk can support what is in our code of conduct?
Well, through the warden. So through the warden, the council code of conduct, 15.3 states complaints must be submitted within six weeks of the matter becoming known to the individual and no more than six months after the alleged violation occurring. You will actually be taken on a complaint or see beyond these deadlines. So that timeframe is exactly what John stated.
If I could, your warden, I have seen that exact wording in a number of codes of conduct throughout the province. My view, I can give it today, is I honestly think six weeks is a little short, but it's at the discretion of the council. Remember, you're creating or you're adopting a complaint protocol. If you think six weeks is appropriate, then it's your discretion to have it read exactly like this. If you think a longer period is justifiable and warranted, then you can do that. The one case that's gone to the courts that's dealt with a complaint protocol is Diviazzi versus the City of Vaughan Integrity Commissioner. And in that case, the member was complaining about the complaint protocol and the court said, "Well, who better to have to deal with it than the council itself who put it in place?" So I have seen 15.3 in other codes. But my own view is that I think the six-week limitation is too, too short. It does say no more than six months after someone's become aware of it, but I still think six weeks initially is a little too short.
You did indicate that, okay, to your point there, you did indicate that perhaps we do need to do some sprucing up and refining of our code of conduct. So perhaps that's something we could deal with and have a discussion about as a council when that particular takes place. And before we go any further, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe West Perth uses you as an integrity commissioner as well?
Yes, that's correct. West Perth and Perth South and the county. I believe the other two municipalities have a different integrity commissioner. I know one of them use Greg Stewart out of Godrich, who's a very good man. And I'm just not aware of what the fourth municipality, who they use. But yes, West Perth is my firm.
Okay, so just my point to that is perhaps maybe the, your staff could have discussions between the three municipalities of all three, you know, addressing or sprucing up or redefining. That would work?
Yep, we could do that.
Your worship, I think if I could, the question wasn't, maybe not dear to me. I think that's an excellent idea. Not only that, there would be efficiencies in doing them all at once. My firm has been retained by a number of other counties where we've worked with the locals and the county all at once to develop a code of conduct that is similar. I'm not saying identical, but we generally create one for everyone then to look at and everyone can then, you know, tweak it if they see something particular that they would like addressed in there. So I think that's an excellent idea. Can I move on, your warden? Is that all right?
Carry on.
Okay, thank you. By the way, excellent questions, councillor Castenburgh. Integrity commissioners, I'm going to talk about myself a little bit. So it's a statutory officer who reports directly to council. So we don't report to staff in any way or to any individual member or to the head of council. We report to council. We exercise our functions independently. And you'll see there that the functions are assigned by the municipality. We advise councils, we educate members, like I'm doing today. We investigate complaints and we conduct inquiries. We adjudicate complaints and make decisions under inquiries. And we recommend penalties or remedial measures or actions to be taken if there are any contraventions. This essentially, the integrity commissioner framework came out of the Toronto Computer Leasing Public Inquiry report from Madam Justice Bellamy back in the mid 2000s there, 2005, where she says, "An effective integrity commissioner system really provides two basic services." And it's very rude, two services. Advisory to help both staff as well as members understand and seek to prevent contraventions and breaches. And two, an investigative or enforcement service. And that's been expanded by the legislation. And I'll talk to you a bit about that in a moment. As I said, integrity commissioner is a mandatory accountability officer. And you'll see there at the bottom, my firm was appointed. Now, I keep saying I'm the integrity commissioner, I'm not really. It's my firm. I lead all of our accountability mandates, but often there'll be other members of my firm who will be involved, especially on investigations. I often will assign a particular person to be the lead investigator if there is an investigation to be conducted. And I work with the person, but essentially let them do the investigation. And often put together at least the first draft of the report, which I will consult with them, review, peer review, revise and then finalize. You might often see me in front of council, speaking and presenting to the reports, but that doesn't have to be the case. And again, it's the firm who is the integrity commissioner. We've often been asked, in fact, the internal ombudsman came to me and said, "This person's complaining because you didn't sign the report. Where did you delegate this?" And I said, "I didn't have to delegate anybody." Because I said, "If you look at the authorizing appointing by law, it was the firm that was appointed. I'm just one of the persons who work on these matters." So I did not have to formally delegate under the act. And there is an authority for the integrity commissioner to delegate under, I believe, 223.3 sub 3. And that happens sometimes because we might have a conflict of interest and it would be inappropriate for the firm to be involved in a matter and adjudicate upon it. And this has happened to me twice now on matters where I have advised the council in a closed meeting. And wouldn't you know, there was a disclosure of confidential information and then there was a request for the integrity commissioner to conduct an inquiry or an investigation. And I can't do it. I was one of the persons who theoretically could have breached the confidential information provision. So I had to step aside and I delegated that to another person to conduct the investigation. My firm has also been delegated the authority by a number of other integrity commissioners throughout the province, when they have had conflicts of interest. It arises occasionally and you'll see that. The functions, what I've done here is I've truncated section 223.3 sub 1, where the functions of the integrity commissioner are set out in the statute. And what I've done is in red, I put the new authority. It used to be that the only authority that the integrity commissioner had was to apply and enforce codes of conduct and other ethical policies, procedures, rules. And then to provide essentially educational information to council and to staff. Now, integrity commissioners had always read in the authority to provide advice. And really, I'm going to go back two slides. They really relied on this, that from the Madam Justice Bellamy's inquiry report, which said, "Well, integrity commissioner is supposed to provide advice to prevent contraventions." So many integrity commissioners read in that that was probably the scope of their authority. It's now been made clear by the amendments by Bill 68 at the beginning of 2019 that the, and it's the third bullet here, that says that integrity commissioners can provide written advice to members regarding their obligations under a code of conduct, under ethical procedures, rules and so on, as well as the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And you'll see in the second bullet that I've highlighted, integrity commissioners as of 2019 now have a role with respect to the application and enforcement. integrity commissioners as of 2019 now have a role with respect to the application and enforcement of your obligations as members of council under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And that's entirely new. That wasn't there before. I was on a subcommittee for the Municipal Integrity Commissioners of Ontario speaking to the province on changes to Bill sixty-eight. And we were, I'll be honest, a little bit floored when they told us we're now going to actually give integrity commissioners more authority to look after the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I was very pleased, but I was very surprised. I was pleased because I had been doing work under the MCIA for twenty-some years. I'd been giving advice to members of council. I had been taking some members of council to court to hold their feet to the fire for breaching the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. I'd certainly represented a number of members of council in defending applications. So I was thrilled because this was right in my wheelhouse. But immediately I went like, to this date, I said, integrity commissioners haven't had to deal with the municipal conflict of interest act. You're going to have a lot of people in the province who are going to be giving advice and potentially being asked to make very, very serious decisions on matters that they know nothing about and have no experience in. That's come to light and I don't want to certainly slag any other integrity commissioners, but I've seen some really really surprising decisions from integrity commissioners because they just don't know the MCIA. So those are the new functions, a large expansion of the authority of integrity commissioners. Advice, again, I think one of the most important functions that an integrity commissioner have is the ability now, expressability to provide written advice to a member of council with respect to his or her obligations under the code of conduct, any ethical policy guidelines or procedures, as well as the MCIA. The advice, I'm going to reinforce this. The request for the advice must be in writing. That's not a requirement of me. It's not a requirement of the township or the county. It's a provincial requirement under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And that makes absolute sense because what you don't want is a he said, she said, the member saying, "Well, I thought I asked the right question and that's how they responded." And the integrity commissioner going, "Uh-uh, that's not what you asked me. You asked me a very nuanced question. I gave you an answer on a nuanced one." So now the province has said, "The request must be in writing." And of course, the advice has to be in writing, which I think is a really great thing. So if I ever provide advice, I think I have to, to a couple of you, you'll see often that what I'll do is I'll reiterate what I think the factual background and factual circumstances are. And then I'll indicate at the end of the advice, often that you are entitled to rely on this advice. However, if there's any inaccuracies or something's incorrect or the assumptions that I may have made are not precise and correct, you are to advise me because it may impact the advice that I've given you. So the very bottom bullet is very important. The member is entitled to rely upon the advice if all relevant facts are provided to the integrity commissioner and the advice is followed. And I usually build this in to any codes that I have to offer an added measure of protection for you in case someone comes forward, brings a complaint and you've already asked me for the advice and I've told you, you're good to go, or you're good to say this. And you have, you followed my advice and yet someone still files a complaint. I found that that's been a really terrific thing because it's actually come up more often than I thought it would. In several municipalities, I have received complaints precisely on matters that council members have reached out to me, received my advice, actually followed my advice to a T. So it's very easy for me then to say, "I'm not going to deal with this complaint." But I also have a legislative basis to do so because it's in the complaint protocol. You'll find when I talk to you about the MCIA, there is a provision in the MCIA that if you do look, reach out to the integrity commissioner, disclose all relevant facts, the integrity commissioner gives advice and you follow the advice, it's one of the defenses that you can bring to the court should anyone ever come forward and bring an application under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. And I think that's an incredibly great and useful tool. Very cost effective because if you've ever done one of these hearings or ever been involved, let's hope that none of you ever do. It is very expensive, is very time consuming and is emotionally taxing because people are questioning your integrity and there's a lot invested in it. So I find that that last provision, the member may rely upon the advice is very, very important. And I would build that into your, any new code. Investigations, I won't, I won't give a lot of illustration here because I don't want to run out of time. I'm almost at the end of my first hour. The integrity commissioner investigates or undertakes an inquiry on a complaint or request basis. Council may always request an integrity commissioner to investigate a matter, can do so as a complaint or could do so as just council asking, "Can you investigate this?" Sometimes provide a report. So I often will give opinions to council on matters that may affect more than one individual member of council in order that I'm not then giving advice to several separate people on a piecemeal basis. And I find that works quite well. Sometimes there are general questions that may impact a number of members of council. And I think it's an efficient way of dealing with it if council asks the question and then allows me to report back to all of council with the answer. The integrity commissioner, interestingly enough, has no authority on his or own volition to investigate a matter. And there was a proposal put forward in Bill sixty-eight at the first reading that integrity commissioners were to be given this authority. And interestingly enough, AMO argued against it and said, "No, we don't want integrity commissioners to do this." I'll tell you, my honest sense is I didn't want to have that authority initially. I thought, well, I don't want to be in that hot seat for me to go and say to council, "By the way, I think something's wrong and I think I need to go and investigate this." "Oh, and by the way, I have to interview all of you, thirty witnesses, and this might cost tens of thousands of dollars." It's difficult, right? It was removed. So there's no authority for the integrity commissioner on his or her own initiative motion to go and investigate. I now have realized that maybe I was looking at it the wrong way before. Because as an integrity commissioner, sometimes you're able to piece together a whole bunch of disparate things that are happening. Breaches of closed meeting matters, privacy breaches under AMPIPA, atrociously bad conduct, occupational health and safety investigations. And all of a sudden, the integrity commissioner is the one person who realizes what's happening and what's going on under the surface. No one else will be able to piece it together. Well, some people may, if it's the same person who's been involved in all of those things. But sometimes it's only the integrity commissioner. No, no, no motion authority. For instance, the Ontario Ombudsman has own motion authority under the Ombudsmen's Act. Inquiry, look at the authority, very, very broad authority. I won't belabor the point. It's right there in the statute. The municipality shall give the commissioner such information as the commissioner believes to be necessary. The commissioner is entitled to have free access to just about anything that the commissioner may find that it's appropriate to look at, at the municipality. So what happens if I'm doing an investigation and someone doesn't want to cooperate with me? Well, the first one, two twenty-three point four, and I believe, I apologize, that, no, that is the correct reference, it's sub two. The integrity commissioner can constitute itself, or him or herself, as a public inquiry commissioner. Yes, under the Public Inquiries Act, and I can compel by subpoena, someone to come forward and give testimony. I can also summons evidence, which is really fascinating. I have never had to use that. I've realized though, that a number of other integrity commissioners routinely constitute themselves as a public inquiry commissioner and proceed under that basis. I've never found the need to do so. I sometimes question whether I needed to do so, but I've never actually had to do that. I've actually found that most people have cooperated and complied. Not always, but sometimes. But I've never thought I had to constitute myself as a public inquiry commissioner. Very, very broad authority there. My obligations, I have a duty of confidentiality. Myself and every person acting under my instructions. And when I say acting under my instructions, I also include the member themselves who are under investigation. I believe this gives authority because as an integrity commissioner, you have authority to conduct the investigation and to carry it out in accordance with the complaint protocol, but also in accordance with your own procedures and how you would like to see it conducted. We have a duty of confidentiality. So you'll often see that we'll say, "This is confidential between us." And yet, members often will go and disclose confidential information. I believe that's incorrect. We have to, if there's a criminal matter involved, then we have to, in a sense, breach the confidentiality provisions and disclose matters. That's allowed by the statute. And then a question that I'm often asked all the time is, well, someone could just FOI that. Well, they can't because on the bottom you'll see sub three and it says, "This section," so the duty of confidentiality prevails over the AMPIPA. So someone cannot file an FOI request as to an investigation or any matter that we're conducting, including the advice that I may have given to any of you. Because AMPIPA does not apply to anything that's conducted in part five point one because under this part, which is referred to in subsection one at the top, we have to maintain the duty of confidentiality. Clearly, we have to deal with people sometimes. We have to, for instance, speak to the IT department if we want to get phone records or a trail of email exchanges that have happened at a certain time. So we have to deal with people. So sometimes it requires us to disclose certain matters and we will try, of course, to disclose as little as possible to people who don't need to know. Anyway, very broad authority. If there is a breach of another statute, we have to suspend the investigation, at least insofar as the complaint may relate to that one matter. So if there was sexual harassment or sexual assault, that might lead to a criminal code offense. And so we might have to refer that to the local police and so on. And then we have to hold off investigating. The one that's often overlaps is, of course, occupational health and safety, workplace violence, workplace harassment. I believe that there is concurrent jurisdiction for the integrity commissioner to proceed. But you can see someone possibly filing a complaint to the integrity commissioner under code of conduct, but also an occupational health and safety complaint. And that often happens. It's great when the integrity commissioner and perhaps the investigator or the municipality knows this. So there can be alignment and maybe only one investigation done. For instance, one person holds off until the other one conducts the investigation and then provides the investigation report to the other party. That's often how it's done. Sometimes you'll get both of them independently going off and that's an effective way of proceeding. The one case that I wanted to mention that I told you is the only decision that's been to a judicial review, and I'll explain to you why. It's in Dibiazzi's City of Vaughan. In this case, there were, there was a complaint that the deputy mayor, Mr. Dibiazzi, the former deputy mayor at the City of Vaughan, had abused his office by harassing, bullying, intimidating, and essentially sexually harassing, intimidating staff, a certain female staff member. She brought this complaint and the integrity commissioner, while conducting the investigation, found thirty-two separate witnesses that came forward. And each of those witnesses told the same story. Yes, Mr. Dibiazzi perpetuates a culture of fear. He acts through intimidation, through bullying, disparagement, and harassment. It was consistent. The integrity commissioner did report one aspect of it to the police and suspended the investigation to that portion. She wrote a damning report, which was accepted fully by the council. And Mr. Dibiazzi challenged that. He brought forward, I believe, thirty-six separate grounds in which the integrity commissioner had acted inappropriately or wrongly. And that's the shotgun approach. The divisional court, you would think, would throw him a bone, would say, "Yeah, okay." That, you know, she may have been offside that. Not one. The divisional court did not find one instance of a contravention by the integrity commissioner. But also, in writing the report and in finding that, said, "The integrity commissioner has a broad authority discretion in how she conducts an investigation." And it's that broad authority that's very important. It's very important to me as an integrity commissioner because I understand it may be difficult in each and every case to hit everything precisely on target. So you may have a complaint that has a dozen separate allegations. And you may have a myriad of things. We may go offside slightly on one of them. It doesn't mean that it prejudices the entire investigation or that casts you know, the investigation in a questionable way. The integrity commissioner in this case decided on a whole bunch of grounds, but I'm just going to highlight a few of them, that the integrity commissioner's broad authority includes a decision when to investigate and when not to investigate. Again, I like to have a summary dismissal provision in the code, but the divisional court will back me up if I summarily dismiss and there isn't one. The integrity commissioner can also reformulate a complaint. So a complaint comes in and it doesn't read quite right, but the integrity commissioner knows essentially what the complaint wants to do. The divisional court said, "Yeah, the integrity commissioner can go and reformulate the complaint and then investigate that complaint." It was very interesting. I didn't think that that authority would be that broad, but it just shows you the scope of what the what the divisional court thought about the role of integrity commissioners. Also said that the integrity commissioner could undertake a targeted search on the municipal system for emails, also phone records. She was entitled not to disclose the names of city witnesses if there was a fear of reprisal or harassment. Remember, thirty-two separate people came forward saying that Mr. Dibiazzi had perpetuated a culture of fear. And the court said, "He's not entitled to know the names of those people." And the court makes some really great comments about the disclosure that has to be made. The court basically said, "You have to consider what's at stake here." In a criminal code proceeding where someone's freedom may be at stake, then you have to have the ultimate degree of disclosure. In this case, what penalties are involved? There's a reprimand, there's suspension of pay. It's at the lowest end of the spectrum here. So there was no entitlement for the member to know the names of witnesses. This often happens. I've got, I had several of them where people come forward and said, "That person on social media has discriminated against a whole bunch of people, has disparaged us, has defamed, slandered us." Those are separate, of course, legal matters, but and the member, of course, the first thing that they say is, "Who filed the complaint?" There's no need. It's on social media. Why would you need to know who filed the complaint? It's out there for anyone to look at. So very broad investigative authority. Talk about enforcement. The enforcement is really reporting to council, the report, any periodic report, like an annual report, a periodic report, discloses the activities, but doesn't disclose any confidential information. However, the integrity commissioner has wide ambit under the report about conduct. If the report is about the conduct of one or more members of council, the integrity commissioner may disclose such matters that he or she feels is appropriate. That could include, for instance, the names of any witnesses or the names of the complainant. Generally don't do that, but it can disclose other things. And this has recently come to light. There was, I was recently involved representing an integrity commissioner in a Francophone community, Hoxbury, out by Ottawa. And the mayor was aghast at the integrity commissioner's report and said, "This is terrible. It's going to ruin my reputation that I spent years building." And tried to block the report of the integrity commissioner to council. I represented the integrity commissioner. We were able to repel that. The mayor then did a second round of attack. She brought a stay application, a stay motion to the court to block the council. to block the council from uh making a decision on the report. And Justice Bodwin uh recently issued a decision uh on March the eighth that said, no, the integrity commissioner has to report. And the whole scheme works on council making a decision. Council's entitled to make a decision on this. Uh, no, you have, you can file a judicial review application, but you can't block the council from making a decision. Uh, I think that's an absolutely correct ruling. Um, uh, and now we're just trying to figure out if the mayor will be going ahead and actually bringing a judicial review application. She, she said absolutely she's going to. Uh, I'm not sure she will. Uh, it it's, it's incredible amount of money that's uh, that's costing the municipality because the municipality pays all of these costs. Um, the municipal duty, when I report, I report and council receives it and then makes the disclosure public. That's the whole part of the act. It's to shed a light on uh any contraventions that may have occurred. Or in some cases, our reports come forward and they're reports to council to say there has been no contravention. And I think sometimes that's warranted. Now, often when we're dismissing uh complaints, the the members will often say, well, write a formal report. And it's uh, we have to weigh the cost of doing that to the real benefit. Uh, the member often, of course, would like to see a formal report. Uh, that's at council that says they've done nothing wrong, but uh, we have to weigh that. And unfortunately, sometimes we said, no, we're not gonna go and do a formal report. Uh, you should be thankful that we just dismissed this outright. Uh, we often do formal reports when the matter is in the media. So the complaint's gone to the media and said, look at what the member's done. And basically plays their whole case out uh in the media. And there's been a whole bunch of articles, uh perhaps also on social media. So sometimes it is warranted that we actually write a report to say there is no contravention uh by the member of council. Uh, enforcement, there are, and I'll be really clear. I just wrote a report Monday for another council who asked me this question. There are only two penalties when the integrity commissioner has found a contravention. There is a reprimand. And yes, it sounds exactly what you think it sounds like. It's a censure. It's council indicating their displeasure with what the member's done. And it can be done, you know, in a number of ways. Council passing a resolution basically saying, we denounce this action, this uh course of conduct. We expect better. Uh, and, you know, from there, you know, down. There is also a suspension of the remuneration paid to the member. This is interesting. Many people misinterpret this as a suspension of the member for up to three months. In fact, there is a very notable uh report from an integrity commissioner, won't name the municipality, where uh she actually recommended a suspension of the integrity commissioner for three months, and council approved that. It's wrong. That's not what the section says. Uh, by the way, that that report is rife with all sorts of errors. I understand that the member of council has hired very good legal counsel to represent him uh on a judicial review application, which will be heard by the court. Um, what's important for you to know is, and I emphasize this in the divisional court in front, in front of Justice Bodwin uh one month ago, is that the integrity commissioner does not make decisions on codes of conduct. What the integrity commissioner does is make recommendations and can impose, can make recommendations to impose penalties and also to impose remedial or correct, remedial measures or corrective actions. It's council who makes the decision. Uh, some of my councils feel uneasy about this. They say, you're putting us in a really awkward position. You're making us judge uh judge our own uh fellow members. Uh, a number of these councils have actually delegated the authority to my firm to actually impose the penalties. I've given opinion to a number of councils that that is, you you are entitled to do that under, under the municipal act. You are entitled to delegate your powers. And I believe it's within the confines of the legislation, uh, within the scope of the legislation for councils to do that. Uh, that's, that's the minority. Most councils will retain the authority themselves. The danger there is that you have politicized decisions. Um, and I've said so in several of uh of my municipalities. Corrective or remedial measures. This is very important. These are not penalties. But the court in the infamous Magner versus Ford case uh dealing with the City of Toronto Act, which provisions are similar, virtually identical to the uh municipal uh act, uh has said that a council has a broad purview to impose uh remedial measures or corrective actions to seek to repair or remediate um uh something that may have gone wrong. These are not penalties, and the one that proves the point is Altman versus Witcher Stovall, where the council, you could see, were completely fed up with its former mayor and against the advice and the report of its integrity commissioner, decided that it wanted to do just a little bit more. Well, the little bit more meant that what were remedial measures by the integrity commissioner, all of a sudden became sanctions. They became penalties in the guise of remedial measures. And Mr. Altman went to court and actually had those quashed as being penalties that weren't authorized under the act. Finally, uh, what happens if I come before you uh with an investigation report? Well, I have to report. You have to make a decision. And I quote from the trial integrity commissioner's annual report. She had reported to council uh on a report. And what had happened in this particular municipality is the council member uh got his gang on board. And what they did is they basically cross-examined her as she was giving her report. And in her uh annual report, she noted this and said, it is plain to see that any value gained by assigning a neutral, independent expert officer, i.e. the integrity commissioner, to investigate misconduct on the behalf of council is lost when council attempts to go behind the findings or challenge the lines of inquiry or analysis undertaken. It is also unfair to the parties and other others involved. It has the overall impact of undermining the accountability framework in the office of the integrity commissioner itself. I bring that to your attention because I have been cross-examined uh by councils when they don't like what my report says. And um, at first, I thought this is part of the the game. I, I have to sit there and take it. I now realize I don't. And so what I'll do is I will not answer questions uh that seek to cross-examine me. It's inappropriate. It's not proper. And in fact, uh, the only thing that is in front of council on a report is the recommendations. And the recommendations speak to, is there a sanction? Is there a penalty? Are there remedial measures? So I will quiet up. I will actually go silent. And that's awkward for everyone if someone is seeking to cross-examine my findings. That's not the proper thing to do. And in fact, it's usually covered because the person would have had an opportunity to uh question those during the process. Uh, it's part of procedural fairness and natural justice. So what happens if you have a complaint go uh to council and the complaint uh is found to have merit? And there is, there are findings that say there is a contravention, and there may be uh a recommendation of a penalty and or remedial measures. And council says, oh, yeah, we agree with the integrity commissioner. We have an impartial, neutral, objective uh expert person who's done this. We're going to agree with that and we're gonna impose the penalty. What happens if you're a member of council? Well, there's no right to appeal. However, you can bring a judicial review application to the courts. And that's done under section two of the Judicial Review Procedure Act. Or if you don't like the investigation and how it was conducted, you can ask for a review by the Ontario Ombudsman. And there's new authority as of two thousand and sixteen for the Ontario Ombudsman to review uh the process and the and the conduct of the integrity commissioner. Uh, I've been told by legal counsel at the Ombudsman's office that at the end of two thousand and nineteen, so I'm, I'm a little bit behind in my numbers, there were a hundred and four complaints against integrity commissioners. And I asked them, how many have been fully investigated? And the answer was not one. It looks like integrity commissioners, for the most part, have been doing their jobs. I've had, and I'll, I'm happy to disclose this. I've had at least two complaints that I'm aware of that have been filed within Ombudsman's office about my conduct during the investigation. And the Ombudsman's office has been great to deal with. They've asked me questions. They've come to me. They said it's, it's an informal investigation. We'd like to know what you did. And they asked very pointed questions uh of me. Did you do this? What did you do to follow that up on? Did you, uh, this is, uh, is this in accordance with the complaint protocol? They're very good. And in both cases, the Ombudsman has found that there was nothing that I did uh, or my firm did that was wrong. And they issued very kindly, but at my request, letters to the municipality confirming that. So my experience with the Ontario Ombudsman's office has been good, even though it is um, it is unsettling that people make the complaints, but that's part of the process. And certainly, they're entitled to do so, and I'm happy to defend uh anything that I've done uh with the Ontario Ombudsman. And thus far, it's been a a good solution. The only problem with that is the costs are all paid by the municipality. So if there's a complaint or if there's a judicial review application, all those costs are borne by the municipality because the integrity commissioner uh is identified for those things. And finally, uh, Warden and members of council, uh, my last slide here. Uh, all members of council and local boards are subject to code of conduct. There's four mandatory prescribed matters. The integrity commissioner has very broad authority to investigate and report and can provide, and please, let's not minimize this, the importance of it, the uh ability to uh to give advice to you as a preventative measure. Uh, and the other one, uh, I, the last slide there will lead into my next presentation on the M C I A. So that's the conclusion of my first presentation, uh, Warden. And uh, while I switch slides, uh, perhaps I can ask if there are any questions from anyone on what I've just spoken about.
We're unmuted. Uh, anybody got any questions for John at this point in time?
Uh, Mr. Warden, if I might, uh, John, thank you for your presentation. Very interesting. Um, you talked earlier about uh your ability to instruct people to to confidence. And I'm wondering if that applies also to the complainants who are filing and who might choose not to be discreet about their filing of such an application.
Yeah, that's uh, that's through you, Warden. That's uh, that's a really good question. Uh, Counselor Kastenberg, the, the difficulty with that is, uh, I'm trying to get you on full screen. For some reason, I'm really having difficulty at at my end here. I wanna get the other slide on. Um, i- i- it's, I've recently met this, um, where we have attempted to do that. And uh, the complaint uh just goes to me and says, well, you know what? Um, uh, I'm, I'm entitled to uh to say that. Usually, the complaint is already gone and done something even before the complaint's been filed. We certainly can't control that. What we can try to control is the process, the replies, the responses, and so on. Um, it's, it's difficult. If the complainant is not a member of council, there's really little you can do. Uh, and what you might end up doing, and it's really unfortunate, but is having a counter sort of complaint about the member's conduct and breaching the confidentiality uh part of it.
You're good.
Is, is there any other questions?
Let's kind of start early.
After you, Jim. Uh, great report. Yeah, no, it's interesting. You talked there uh, it, it's dialing it even back a little more and talked of, you know, friends or you might have been a a friend in high school and like that, that you may be in a, you know, in a conflict. Well, us as municipal councillors, good lord, done business with half the township, you know? It, it, it makes it tough. Um, you know, we're here for a hundred and fifty years. Um, it, it's the idea of the municipal local level, you know? It, it can be tough to, right? It's, it's very interesting. I find this all very great. But it's, it's good. It needs to be there. But boy, like you said, it's, it's, it's quite a process. And I'm learning again today, but no, thanks. I just, I just wanted to point that out. It makes it tough for us as local councillors in the community and, you know, it's, it's interesting.
If, if I could, uh, Warden, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, Counselor Harlock. Uh, uh, great question. Those are very, um, uh, the, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act actually has a principle at the front that does say, and I'll show it to you in just a moment, that talks about the benefit of members being involved in their community. And we, believing, we get complaints. Uh, we recently dealt with one. And I can say, because it's a public report in St. Catherine's, where the council member reached out uh because um, the the neighbor uh of the complainant had asked him if he could help with this dispute that he was having about a fence, I believe, or something like this. Um, and the, the complaint, the, the neighbor had reached out to him because they'd played on the same hockey team. Well, the uh, the, the complainant said to, this council member is weighing into things that are not his ward, and he's only doing it because he's friends with this guy. Well, we said, there's nothing wrong with you knowing people. I mean, a council member, my God, that's, that's part of what they do. Uh, now, the example that I brought before about the, the close personal connection, I'll be, it was pretty heightened. I talked about best friends in high school, maid of honor, uh, godmother to, you know, the children. You know, I kind of used that inflated, uh, maybe, not, not necessarily unrealistic, but just to show you, that's one gradation. You know, and there may be another one where someone, Counselor Harlock, may have come to you years ago and may have, uh, you know, sponsored something that you were, you know, uh, uh, you know, seeking to advance. You know the person that way, but you've had no connection over the years. There's nothing wrong with you knowing them. And I don't see that as being a, a connection that then brings it into the personal uh private realm, but it's all a question of degree. That's why I often say, uh, one of the best things that you can do is ask us for advice before something happens. Uh, that way, if we give you our written advice and you, you then can rely on it, say, the integrity commissioner told me it was okay. By the way, the advice that I give to you is confidential between us, okay? But the act says that you are entitled to disclose the advice. If you don't disclose the full advice, you only disclose part of it, then we are entitled as the integrity commissioner to disclose the full advice that we've given you. Uh, or with your consent, we can disclose it. Uh, but the, so just, just to be clear, I'm not acting as a solicitor client. So we don't have that relationship. But what I have is a relationship with each of the members where I can give you confidential advice and you can give me confidential information uh that then I can, you know, give you advice on. But it doesn't, I, I can't disclose it unless you agree to let me do that. But you can disclose it if it's uh beneficial to you. And often I see that. They get, you know, uh, members come back to me and they say, I'm gonna disclose this because people are asking questions. And I say, there's nothing wrong with that. You're entitled to do that. And I have to write it in such a way uh that uh, that they are entitled to to do that.
I could speak and maybe hear me?
Yeah.
So just, just, that's a great question, good points. And Ron, you may think I'm crazy when I'm gonna say this, but I have found in my political lifetime, which hasn't been that long, perception of the rape pairs is basically nine tenths of the law. And if they perceive you to perhaps have a conflict of interest, basically they're, it's in your best interest to probably declare that. Because I know, I had an example where my son sharecropped a farm and there was a municipal drain on it. It was being worked on, and I, as a councillor, declared a conflict. I had no benefit or interest or revenue that was ever gonna come from that. But most of the people on that drain, but I had a conflict of interest voting on it. And I declared it in advance and walked away from it. Couple of people questioned what I did, but there was a lot of people said, it's a good job you did.
Uh, I have, uh, I have an answer for that. I often say to uh, to, to members, uh, the public, and you'll, you'll see this in my next, uh, my next presentation. The public often is not aware of what a conflict of interest is. And uh, I've had uh a number of them, including one that I was working on last evening. Uh, there was a complaint made by a member at a regional municipality under the M C I A, and I've had to deal with it. On its face, it looked like the member should have recused herself, declared a community interest and recused herself. She didn't. Actually, when we really got into it, she was correct. She, she was entitled to deal with the matter. Um, and we have And we have now written a report that will indicate that there was no contravention. But seemingly, on its face, it did look like there was a contravention, but the public doesn't, doesn't know. So your approach, we often will say to members, look, the cautious approach here might be for you to step away and disclose and not do anything. But the nice thing about it is, is you can ask for our advice. But I'll be honest about this. And I don't want to, I don't want to, I keep saying, it's great that you can come and ask me for my advice, but there is a cost to this, right? I mean, the municipality does have to pay for our, our time to do this. That is how it's been set up by the province. And the province said, we understand this, but we, we really wanted to assure ourselves that members wouldn't be left on their own. In most cases, most municipalities do not provide a budget for you to go to get outside legal advice on this. You can't go to your own county lawyer or township lawyer because they act for the municipality. They don't act for you individually. So the province said to us, the policymakers at the province said, the best person to do this is the Integrity Commissioner. But yes, it's a cost to the municipality, but we think it's a well worthwhile cost. And members should be happy that they now have a resource to go to.
Okay, good. So just before we start into your next slide, can we take a five minute break so everybody could stretch and get some blood flowing? And no more than five minutes, because I realize we want to get through this.
Yeah. And then, Warden, I, I, Warden, that's fine with me. And I'll move a little bit quicker through the next presentation. However, I also understand that there may be more questions too, but I'll try to move a little bit quicker.
And that's fine. I just, you know, some of us are getting a little older. I need to stand and stretch and circulate some blood for a couple of minutes.
Me too.
So if we could just ask everybody to mute themselves while we turn off that video. No more than five minutes. We'll throw up a session, break session here, and we'll be good to go.
Could I try to get my next slide up and ready on the screen?
It was already coming, wasn't it?
Was there?
Yeah, yes, John, if you'd like, you can throw it up. We do have it up on the screen right now, but it's just not in the full mode.
Okay.
If I just go from the beginning, we're good.
Is that, is that in full mode?
It is showing the presenter side of things.
Oh, okay. Let me just sec, maybe else. Let's see if I can swap them. Does that work?
That is perfect.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Nice weather up there these days, eh, Todd?
Even in the north, Daryl, it's, it's a pleasant spring unfolding.
Yeah, you know, I was up at Port Algen yesterday. Like, I have a farm up there. Oh, it's about five miles off the water. Man, it was, oh, it was so nice. It was nice, tidy, you know?
If I were more ambitious, I'd get my bike out, but anyway.
Lots of time.
Yeah.
Okay, we're unmuted here in the office. I'm thinking we're going to try and get fired up here again. I hear you guys talking about what a beautiful day it is, and I'm sure some of you want to get something. And if you're looking for something, you can help, come us, help us put 28% on some wheat and spread some fertilizer. Anyway, is John's there?
I am.
I think we've got everybody back, for the most part. A couple of staff members not. I guess seeing limited screen here. So anyway, John, if you want to carry on again, that would be great.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you very much. You, you can see the screen right now with the new slide deck, right? Municipal Conflict of Interest? Okay, just want to make sure. And, and that shows you that I've gone to the next slide?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure. So we're seeing the same thing. Thank you. This, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, the granddaddy of all municipal accountability statutes here in Ontario. The current version is really pretty much the 1972 version, the original that was put in place. But many people have said, and I traced a couple of provisions back to the Baldwin Act in 1849, yes. Substantial judicial consideration. There's no regulations under the MCIA. And of course, it applies to members of council and members of local boards, very broadly defined. Similar to, but not exactly like the definition in the Municipal Act for local boards. But doesn't apply to staff. It doesn't apply to administrative persons. The purpose, and I trotted out the Moll and Fisher case, a very famous case. You'll often see it. The obvious purpose of the Act is, of course, to prohibit members of councils and local boards from engaging in any decision making where they have a vested interest. Either they have a financial interest or a personal or a private interest in the matter. So that's the underlying intent and purpose of the statute. So as I said, before you take your seat, you have to swear a declaration of office. And number three says, you will disclose any personal pecuniary interest, any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect. That is a personal obligation to you. It's not an obligation that anyone else has, nor that anyone else has to fulfill for you. I often get matters where someone says, well, why didn't so and so tell me? The CAO was at the meeting. My fellow members were there. The clerk was there. Why didn't someone tell me? It's not their obligation. It's your individual obligation. And the case from Cooper and Wianco, a case from Georgian Bay from just a couple of years ago, says the decision to exercise the obligations set out of Section 5, and I'll tell you what those are in a moment, are characterized as a matter of personal judgment for each member of council, okay? Statutory principles. The Act, this is arising out of the Mississauga Judicial Inquiry. Justice Cunningham in 2012 recommended that the, that the Act, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, have principles that underline its interpretation and application. And you'll see that the principles say it's important to have integrity, independence, and accountability for local government decision making, reconciling, reconciling the public duties with the personal interests of the members. Members are supposed to perform the duties of office, not only under the MCIA, but with their other duties with, with an eye to integrity and accountability. And then the fourth one, which is something that I mentioned to Counselor Harlock just before, there is a benefit to municipalities and local boards where members have a broad range of knowledge and continue to be active in their communities, whether in business, in the practice of a profession, profession, in community associations, or otherwise. There's nothing wrong with doing that. What you have to do, though, is be mindful of your obligations under the MCIA. There's nothing for you wrong with you running your own business in town, having your family in town, your kids going to school in your community. My god, that's, that's, that's the hallmark of being a representative of your community. There's nothing wrong. What is important, though, is to make sure that you don't run afoul of your obligations to discharge the public interest for the public good and not for personal, and in this case, under the MCIA, for your own financial well-being. Conflict of interest, again, harkening back to what Counselor Harlock earlier asked. The residents, your community often doesn't understand. They think a conflict of interest is the common meaning. And I just defined that. I'm not sure where I took that from. It's very different under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, where it has a very specific meaning. It's a direct, indirect, or deemed pecuniary interest. And what is also important, again, I took from Justice Healy's decision in Cooper and Wianco, where she said, what constitutes, constitutes a sufficient public, sorry, sufficient pecuniary interest in order to trigger the application of your obligations under Section 5 will not necessarily be demarcated by a bright line. So I've often said to members, there's no bright line test. I can't tell you at the beginning of council's term what will hold you in good stead for the remainder. All of these matters that come up in council are often very nuanced, are very fact specific. And it's very hard to say to you, well, you can't cross the line by doing this because it all depends on the particular facts of the particular matter that may be before council, a committee, or that may be dealt with by, by municipal staff. So first of all, the MCIA has a narrow scope. It only deals with pecuniary interest. Yes, an archaic term. Pecuniary means financial, okay? It means economic, monetary, financial, okay? It can be direct, indirect, or deemed. It can also be positive or negative. Positive in the sense that you can gain from the matter, or negative in the sense that you may not lose your economic or financial standing or value, okay? And the pecuniary interest is something that arises before council or committee or before municipal staff for consideration. So let's talk about a direct interest. A direct interest is one that expressly and unequivocally has an impact on your finances, economic standing, property value, okay? It's, I have a quote there. It may not be the most helpful for you. It helps me when I'm looking at it. It includes a situation where the member could experience an immediate, in the sense of a non-deviated or traceable financial or economic impact, which is positive or negative in nature, okay? Again, I got the point there. You may stand to gain, you may stand to lose. A potential interest is also possibly to be considered a pecuniary interest. And there's a case from 25 years ago, Moffett and Westin, that says, yes, a potential interest. Because sometimes the interest hasn't been, been made absolutely clear. So a potential interest can be a pecuniary interest. There has to be a direct line, though, to see that. It can't be a purely speculative or hypothetical kind of interest. There has to be some, some real traceable effect. And that's something that we find. I recently was involved in a matter where the Integrity Commissioner in this municipality had said, well, we know that this person runs the only shop in the municipality. And yes, we know that he moved this motion that would allow an increase in the use of the particular thing that this member is selling in the shop. And I said, hold on. It's the only retailer in the entire municipality that sells those wares. And the member is actually moving a motion to increase the use of that type of, in this case, a vehicle. How can that not be? of that type of, in this case, a vehicle, how can that not be a direct interest? The Integrity Commissioner didn't believe so, my client instructed me to commence an application under the M C I A. I felt that it was a real discernible potential pecuniary interest. Indirect interest, so, direct is unequivocally your interest, directly yours, an indirect interest is something where you may have, uh, an interest that's deemed to you because of a corporate interest, a membership interest, or a partnership or employment interest, so. Section two luckily defines what the interest is, there is one problem with it, and I'll talk about it in just a moment. So, if you are a director, senior officer of a public or private company, if you are a shareholder of a private company, or you have a controlling interest in the public company, if that entity, that company comes in front of your council, asking for something, a proposal under an R F P for an award, a zoning bylaw amendment, uh, a license, um, some other approval. You have to be very careful, because if that entity has a financial interest, you have an indirect interest in the matter by section two. I'm gonna skip the fourth bullet for just a moment, and I'm gonna go is, uh, number four, uh, the, the fifth bullet. You are a partner, so your partner comes in front, and I mean partner in the business sense here, but, uh, suppose it could be a family member, even though that's covered off somewhere else. Uh, if your partner, uh, comes in front and they have a financial interest, so for instance, let's just say I was a member of the township council, and I'm a partner at my firm, I can, I can do that. I can be a council member and still be a partner in a law firm, but my partner, my, my, my firm comes before council asking for something, for instance, to be awarded a legal services R F P, uh, award. I, I can't deal with that, because my partnership has an interest, therefore, I'm deemed to have an indirect interest, can't deal with it. Let's say I'm not a partner at my firm, and the firm doesn't like me, they like me a little bit, so they, they let me stay on as an associate, or as of council, not as a partner, well, then I'm in the employment of my law firm, and if the law firm comes in front of, um, of the township council, I can't deal with that matter, because I'm in the employ of the very entity that's coming in front for some benefit, or that may be asking for some benefit for their client. So can't deal with it, okay, those are indirect interests, the one that's very contentious is the fourth bullet, which is you are a member of a body, and that's because the term body is not defined in the M C I A. But the Orangeville and Dufferin case, so the town of Orangeville bringing an M C I, uh, a, a question on the M C I A application against the county of Dufferin, its upper tier municipality. The Court of Appeal said, it's not an implied term, but in order to carry out the purposes of the act, it's to be given its widest possible interpretation. So beware that if you're a member of a body, and you sit on the board of directors of a local entity, and that entity comes before council for a grant, or for some relief, or to get some other benefit. You may have a real problem there, and you may not be able to, uh, to deal with it, because you may have a financial interest by virtue of having an indirect interest through that entity, okay? It's complicated, I recently had to deal with this yesterday, I gave advice to a member out in Eastern Ontario on that very matter, um, and said to him, I think you have a pecuniary interest in this, because you're a member of this board of directors, um, and yes, you're entitled to be a, a member of that board of directors of this nonprofit. But if that nonprofit comes in front of council, asking for something that's financially based, you have to recuse yourself and disclose it, uh, mayor understands that, and said to me, that's what I'm gonna do, so. So be aware of that, the next one is a deemed interest, and this is the familial, uh, interest. This is a direct or indirect interest that your spouse may have, and that spouse means, uh, common law, uh, same sex. Uh, a child can be a minor child, can be an adult child, or a parent. Uh, and that could be a person who stands in the place of a parent, so in some instances, it can be a grandparent. If it is known to you, then that interest is deemed to be your interest, and this is why. Because your spouse may have an indirect interest, because her employer may have an interest in something coming before council, so you have to be aware of deemed interest. This has come under a lot of fire, many people have said, oh, it's all fine to have this deemed interest for family members, but look at how narrow the scope is, it's only a spouse, child, or parent, what about a sibling? What about, um, uh, an aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, these are not covered. In the recent Missis, uh, sorry, the Callingwood Judicial Inquiry that just came out in November, I believe it was November second, uh, Justice Morocco indicated that the deemed interest provision should be included much more broader, and has indicated it should include very clearly grandparents, uh, siblings, uh, aunts, uncles, nieces, nephews, uh, in-laws, close in-laws. Uh, I always thought that was covered potentially by, by child, an in-law, and depending on the circumstances, could be covered. Uh, so he's indicated that he recommends a much broader application, it's not enshrined, it's only a recommendation. May take years for the province to get to it, province may not even get to it, it took the province, uh, a good seven years to get some of Justice Cunningham's recommendations from the Mississauga Judicial Inquiry. Justice Morocco's just came out at the end of two thousand and twenty, uh, but recommends, uh, much broader context to the deemed interest provisions. So what are your duties? Well, if you're a member of a council, local board, and you have a financial interest in any matter that, that is becoming before council, and you're present at the meeting where the matter is under consideration, then you have to, it says shall, you have to disclose the interest in the general nature prior to any consideration or discussion of the matter, you can't take part in any discussion or vote, and you can't attempt to influence the voting, uh, for any of you who chair meetings, please be aware that just acting as the chair will mean that you are not, uh, you're taking part in the discussion, because you're the chair, right? You can't help yourself but take part in the discussion, remember, the chair often has to make rulings and has to make determinations. It can influence the way the vote goes, so if you're the chair, my recommendation to you is if you've declared, uh, disclosed a pecuniary interest on that matter, even if you're chairing the meeting, you step down and see the chair for that matter, because you would be participating in the discussion, and anyone could say you're attempting to influence the vote. So those are your requirements under section five, under section five point two, a new section that was put in place as of March the first two thousand and nineteen, and I often call this the Hazel McCallion Amendment, because this arose out of the Mississauga Judicial Inquiry and the recommendations of Justice Cunningham. Uh, in that case, the entire matter, or almost the entire matter dealt with, did Hazel McCallion have, uh, conflict of interest that was beyond her, um, pecuniary interest, and the court found that, yes, she did, and it found that while she did abide by all of her obligations under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and any time the matter relating to her son's interest, uh, dealing with the Hotel and Convention Centre complex, she did disclose a pecuniary interest, however, behind the scenes, she was doing all she could to propagate the Hotel Convention Centre complex, which she knew that her son had an equity interest in. So, the law now is that if a member has a financial interest in any matter that is being considered by an officer or employee of the municipality, uh, they can't use the influence of their office to seek to uh, influence any recommendation or decision of an administrative officer. The, uh, this incredibly expands, uh, the M C I A beyond just legislative and deliberative meetings of councils, committees, and local boards, and now can relate to things that, uh, staff may be doing. Um, so there is a preclusion there, and it doesn't apply to where the power is given to uh, someone, i.e. the Integrity Commissioner, to suspend the remuneration of a council member. Exceptions, there are nine specific exemptions in the act that are set out in section four. And there are two general, uh, exemptions, uh, I set them all out in a paraphrased manner in order to get them all within the slides, you'll see that the first nine are all very specific, and in the leading, uh, book on the, on the case, and I'm just gonna show it here, it's Ontario's Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, a handbook, it's a nice little book that, uh, is published by Municipal World. It's very inexpensive, it's only twenty-nine ninety-nine, written by Rick O'Connor and David White, I refer to this almost daily. Uh, if they refer to the first nine exceptions as being self-explanatory and commonsensical. My next slide is going to show you that the nine are all in black, and there are two that I've set out uh, in red, and those are the two that have garnered the greatest amount of judicial consideration, because they're general exceptions that, uh, any member, when they find themselves, uh, subject to an application, will say, well, I have an interest in common with electors generally, or the interest is so remote or insignificant as being likely to not influence my vote. Uh, but I'll tell you, I was in court on I, which relates to any allowance or remuneration, salary or benefit that a member may be entitled to by reason of being a member. Uh, I was in court, and I said to the, the judge, actually, Justice Wood, up in Bracebridge, uh, Muskoka, has sent me, says, you haven't cited many cases here, are there no decisions? And I said, your honor, I've looked. There are no decisions that actually consider the ambit and scope, uh, of I, of, uh, you know, the remuneration for, for being a member, and I said, that's because O'Connor and White say that they're commonsensical and self-explanatory, and Justice Wood said to me, okay, well, Mr. Musk, you got an hour and a half now to explain it then to me. How, let's see how commonsensical it is, and I did, I had spent an hour and a half, and then the other side had an hour and a half. So we spent pretty much all day arguing what I meant, even though it was supposed to be pretty, uh, self-evident. Good story there, I was representing a member who had an application brought against her, and I convinced the court that it's, I is very broad, it refers to any benefit that a member may be entitled to, um, and the court agreed with me, said, yeah, that's a very broad um, uh, broad exemption, and it did apply in my case, so my member was found not to complain yet. But the last two are the two that I'm gonna talk a little bit more about, an interest in common with electors, generally, that's the wording, you would think it meant every elector in the entire municipality, and it's not what it means, because there's an actual definition of, uh, interest in common, it could mean every elector within the entire municipality, but the definition says where there is only part of the area is being impacted, then it means a pecuniary interest in common with electors in only that area. And so the question is, how small can the area be? Can it be two people that are impacted? My answer is no, it has to be broader than that, so what you need to know is, if you're relying on this exception, is the interest in common generally does not need every other ratepayer in the entire municipality. It may mean a, a much smaller area, I gave an opinion to a member of council in New Tecomset um, that, uh, her interest in living in a retirement community of fourteen hundred people was sufficient to trigger the application of this, the court agreed with me, and I said, yeah, it, it actually did. It didn't mean every other resident in the municipality. The question is, is the difference a question of, is it a difference in nature? Or is it a difference in kind or degree? If it's a difference in, uh, sorry, is it a difference in nature or kind? Or is it a difference of degree? If the question is degree, then you can fall within this. But if it is a question of the nature or kind of the exception, then it comes out of, of this, uh, exception, so if you have a difference that is different in nature or kind with other electors, then you can't fit within the exception, but if it's only a question of degree, you can. I'll give you the, uh, I'll give you an example to make this a little clearer, you have a road that's to be paved. There are a hundred properties on this road, right? You own the property that has the biggest frontage, so you could possibly stand to benefit uh, potentially to a greater degree, or be punished to a greater degree if there's a cost on you uh, based on frontage, that is a question of degree, and you would still fall within the exception of an interest in common, so if the question before council was, there's a hundred properties, and you're just one of them, you might fall within the scope of the exception, because you're the same as everyone else. Your property, though, may be prejudiced or may be benefited, uh, because the frontage is larger than everyone else. But that's only a question of degree, let's change the facts just a little. You're on, uh, a, a road, it's to be paved with, uh, modern conveniences, modern infrastructure, all underground, no longer ditches, sidewalks, all underground infrastructure. Uh, but you're the only property that's a commercial property, everyone else is residential. You may be taken out of the exceptions, because your interest being a commercial property owner is different from everyone else's interest, who's a residential property owner. Now, I've given you, again, a bit of an exaggerated, uh, uh, situation, factual situation to try to prove my point there, so it's, it's tricky one, and again, you can come to the Integrity Commissioner for advice. The next one is, and it's the one that I see all the time, the exception for a remote or insignificant interest. Uh, that's found under four K, and that's where the relationship between you and the subject matter uh, in order to fall within this must be so indirect or trivial that it leads to a conclusion that the potential gain or potential loss was not a motivating factor for your decision. And this is all set out in the tests from Whitley and Schnur, which is, would a reasonable elector being apprised of all of the circumstances, not only one of the circumstances, but all of the circumstances, be more likely than not to regard the interest of the counselor as likely to influence the counselor's action and decision on the question, so that is the question that's put to, it's an objective question, but that has some subjective elements, isn't, so it's very interesting. Remoteness, the question of remoteness relates to the immediacy and the potential of financial or economic interest, so in the, the case that I cited there, uh, Darcy and Nino, the, the dollar amount was three hundred dollars, not a huge amount of money, but the court said, no, no, there was an immediate, uh, potential for the gain of that, you can't fall within that, because it wasn't remote. The significance, however, does not relate to the dollar figure, it relates to the importance of the matter, and this was brought forward in the Magdern Ford case, the infamous case where, uh, Mayor Ford, uh, was alleged to have uh, voted on a matter to pay a penalty under the, uh, conflict of interest, uh, uh, sorry, the Code of Conduct City of Toronto, for having improperly lobbied and secured, uh, donations from people and businesses, um, doing business with the city of Toronto. The Integrity Commissioner found that he was wrong, shouldn't have done that, and ordered him to pay back three thousand one hundred fifty dollars. The court said, because Mayor Ford said, I'm a rich man, I'm a multimillionaire, what with three thousand one hundred fifty dollars? Justice Hackman had a good answer for him, said, well, to anyone in Ontario, to any taxpayer in Ontario, three thousand one hundred fifty dollars is a significant sum, but that's not the issue here. It was significant, you had a prepared speech, and you spoke for two and a half minutes, very passionately, this was a matter of importance to you. So you can't get, uh, you, you, you're not within the confines of the exception. Now, what was interesting in the Mayor Ford case is there was no exception in section four of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, that would allow him to actually speak in front of council on that. And the judicial inquiry in Mississauga found that that was wrong, and both Justice Hackman at first instance And both Justice Hackman at first instance, as well as the Divisional Court in Magdern Ford, said, "That is just not right. Anyone who's subject to a financial penalty should have the ability to stand in front of the body that's making a decision on this and argue their case." And this is, this led to an exception in the Act, a limited exception to the Act. And I call this the Mayor Ford Amendment. Where the matter, under consideration at a meeting, is to suspend the remuneration of the member for a breach of the Code of Conduct. And there can be a penalty of up to 90 days, as I indicated before. The member is able to take part in the discussion and can make submissions to council, may attempt to influence the voting. But what the member cannot do, cannot do, is vote on the matter. That's the one preclusion. I'm highlighting it to you because I have a case that's going to court on just this one point. The member ignored this, was warned, the member still voted. And it's so clear in 5.2.1 of the legislation that while you can make submissions to council and you can attempt to influence the voting, you just can't vote on a matter in which you have a financial interest. So please bear that in mind. Let's hope this never arises in Perth County and per se. Duty of disclosure, well, it arises at the meeting at which you have a pecuniary interest. You have to disclose the interest and the general nature. The fact that you're absent at a meeting doesn't excuse you. You have to make the disclosure at the next meeting. Many people don't realize this. Please remember, you have a financial interest at a matter, at a council meeting, and you're not there. Sure, you didn't vote on it, you didn't participate in it, but you have to disclose that. So you have to do it at the next meeting. There is also a requirement for a written statement of disclosure. Where you have disclosed a potential pecuniary interest, you also have to file a written statement. My advice to you is, please do this. Please fill out the form, you probably have them at your municipalities for a written statement. Fill it out before you disclose the pecuniary interest. And then read the same thing out. Therefore, someone can't go back to perhaps an archived audio or audiovisual recording of the matter and look at your written statement and say, "These two are disjunctive, they will say the same thing." So please be aware of that. You have to file a written statement. And I would recommend to you that you write it out beforehand and then say that exact thing. So someone who's really paying attention can't try to impeach you by saying you, you said something different than what you wrote. The clerk has to maintain a registry and people will go and check these. I've been doing that many times when I'm asked to potentially bring a Conflict of Interest application against the member. Here it is, this is very important. You are entitled to ask me for advice. It's specific under legislation. The advice, as I've indicated, just like advice under the Code of Conduct or some other ethical policy, has to be in writing, okay? And I have to respond in writing. What's important here, and I want to emphasize this. You are entitled to ask the Integrity Commissioner for advice as to your obligations, not anyone else's. I often get this. A member of council will call me the day after a meeting and say, "I was at a meeting last night and Councillor X voted on this matter, didn't declare pecuniary interest, but that person's spouse owns that property. I know that. Tell me, are they offside?" And I will say, "I can't give you that advice. That's not advice to you. It's advice relating to your obligation, not advice relating to anyone else's obligation." Okay? I, I'm emphasizing this point because I often get this. And it, you know, it takes time for me to, to reply and respond. And it's often not met very well from the member on the other side who thinks that they're probably doing the right thing by making an inquiry with me. I've also been aware of members giving me hypothetical situations. And I'm very hesitant to dive into that because sometimes they may be giving me a hypothetical on something that's happened the night before, but then only giving me part of the advice. And of course, these things are very fact-driven and they can be very complex to figure out. So I may give them advice, they may then file an application with me, which then I end up siding the other way. And then they're, they're very perplexed by it. Again, you can only ask for advice as to your own obligations. So I'm gonna run through the requirements again, just very quickly to set them out for you. Requirement number one, disclosure. You have to disclose any direct, indirect, or deemed pecuniary interest before consideration of the matter. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave this, you'll have the slide next, so you'll have a little bit of guidance. Number two, you cannot participate in the decision-making process once you've disclosed your pecuniary interest. You can't take part in the discussion and of course, you can't vote. Three, you can't attempt to influence the, the voting in any way. You can't do it before, during, or after the meeting. And you're, Mike is saying, "I don't understand, how can this work? If I'm, the meeting is over, like, why can't I?" Because it may be at a committee meeting. And the matter may still need to come in front of council at a later stage. Or may resuscitate itself and may be reconsidered. But you may have voted in a certain way. So be aware, you can't influence it. So I often say, and I often ask this question, which leads to this. You have to, in Ontario, exit a closed meeting if you have a financial interest, okay? I say it is good practice to exit the meeting, mute yourself, maybe turn off your camera, so people can't see you and can't see your reactions to the discussion. You may do something, you may roll your eyes, you may throw something. That may be seen as an attempt to influence the voting. So I've often said to people, if you can, exit the meeting. Right now, we're in a virtual setting, so turning off your camera and muting your, your mic is a good thing, so no one can see what's happening during the discussion and can't play it back later and say, "Look at that, Councillor X rolled his eyes. Councillor X threw something against the wall to show his displeasure." It shows that you're potentially attempting to influence the voting. Requirements five and six, file the written statement. And six, importantly, you can't attempt to exert the influence of your office upon a staff member to get them to make a recommendation or a decision. It's a question of fact, to be determined on a balance of probabilities, because that's the test for conflicts of interest under the MCA. A balance of probabilities, it's not beyond a reasonable depth, not the criminal standard. So be careful, you can't use the influence of your office. And that's questionable, what is the influence of your office? You carry with you an inherent power. Because just by being a member of council, you carry some weight and your office carries influence. Record of disclosure, the clerk has, and Board Secretary of the local board or committee has to keep a record. Of course, there is the written statements of disclosure, that now registry has to be kept. Most of those are online and available. Quorum, interestingly enough, of course, quorum from Section, I think, 237 of the Act says it's a majority of members of council. Well, if members are required to recuse themselves from voting and participating, then quorum may be lost under the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Section 7 says there is a recalibration and quorum may be able to go down to two people. Yeah, it can go down to two people on a very significant matter. Doesn't happen very often in urbanized settings. Happens up in northern Ontario quite often. But just to show you, I represent a very large municipality, a municipality of over 500,000 people. Sorry, 300,000 people. And eight out of the nine members of council had to declare pecuniary interest on a particular subject matter. And I was advising them. And I said, "You, you've lost your ability to deal with the matter and it deals with a significant matter." It was a $210 million claim. Luckily, subsection 7.2 says that if you go down to less than two members, and again, in this municipality, it was only one member out of nine that didn't declare pecuniary interest. I had to apply to the court and I was in the court last August. Interestingly enough, Justice Myers requested that we attend personally in court. So even though I've done virtual court hearings since then, that one was in court. It was in the Toronto courthouse on University with plexiglass between everybody. I was three times removed with plexiglass with Justice Myers. And he wouldn't accept me to hand something to the clerk, who would then hand it to him. He said, "No, you have to email it." So it was interesting. But in that case, Justice Myers agreed that my counsel was given the authority to continue to deal with the matter. But the caveat to that is, he didn't want the municipality and the members to vote against the public interest and said, "If there's a resolution to this matter, I want you to come back before the court and have the court agree to it because I don't want the municipality left holding the bag if the municipal councillors make a deal that's advantageous to them personally, but not proper for the entire city." So that's one of these. There's only been two decisions, that was the third actually, that have actually been reported on that section. So I wanted to mention quorum. Alleged contravention. An applicant may bring before a judge an application to determine whether a member has contravened statute. The applicant can be an elector. It can be a person demonstrably acting in the public interest. And interestingly enough, it can be the Municipal Integrity Commissioner. The application period is six weeks. Remember, we talked about six weeks under your Code of Conduct? Here's where the six weeks arises. It's, it's from the application period in 8.2 of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. An application may only be made within six weeks of the applicant having become aware of the contravention. The test is a reasonable subjective belief. And the onus is on the applicant to actually prove, either to the court or to the Integrity Commissioner, that they just acquired the knowledge within six weeks. The ultimate limitation period is six years, not six months. Your code says six, six, six months. Under the MCA, it's six years. So even though an applicant may become aware of the alleged contravention only five weeks and six days ago, if it was more than six years ago, they're out of luck in bringing the application. There's an election blackout period, which I think is a very good thing. And I think this should go into your codes of conduct. So one of the changes that I would like to recommend to your staff or for me to implement, if you asked me to draft it, is an election blackout period, which coincides with the election blackout period in the MCI. And that means that people cannot bring Code of Conduct complaints or MCI applications during this period. And where do you see them mostly arising? Yes, during the election year. As I said, the Integrity Commissioner's now given authority to look into possible contraventions. And we, as the Integrity Commissioner for the county, for the township, may be able to act if an applicant comes forward and files an application under this new section of the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act. Sorry, new section of the municipal act that allows an applicant, an elector, or a person demonstrably acting in the public interest, to inquire whether the Integrity Commissioner will look at it. The Integrity Commissioner may look at it, has to complete the inquiry within 180 days. And upon the completion, the Integrity Commissioner may decide to go to court. The municipality is responsible for the cost of this. This has happened, it has happened now three times where an Integrity Commissioner has done an investigation or an inquiry and has made a decision at the end of that inquiry that the member breached the MCI. And the breach wasn't trivial, it wasn't inconsequential. The breach had some import. And the Integrity Commissioner has decided to apply to the court. There's been one decision, it was just issued less than a month ago. The court found that the member was in breach, but found that the breach did not merit removal from office. I understand yesterday that the Integrity Commissioner hasn't instructed their counsel to appeal that decision because the penalty was just too minimal, which was a 90-day suspension. No, a 90-day suspension pay and a reprimand. There is a second one going from the same municipality. And I have the third one going. I'm representing an Integrity Commissioner who's brought an application against one of his members of council for having voted on a suspension of pay. She thumbed her nose to the Integrity Commissioner, to her own counsel and to the electorate by actually voting, even though she had been warned not to, who still decided to vote on a penalty of a 60-day suspension pay. And the Integrity Commissioner said, "That's it. I'm going to the court and I'm gonna ask for her to be removed from council and be disqualified." So that's the application that we're bringing forward. I'm acting for the Integrity Commissioner in that case. The penalties for contravention. I've shown you the two of them. There's now no automatic removal from office, which used to be the case. There is now an expanded range. You'll see the first two set out in red relate to pretty much what you've seen in the Code of Conduct. A reprimand or suspension of pay. In the one that just went ahead, that was just decided, Pierce, sorry, Integrity Commissioner Elliot Lake versus Councillor Pierce. The court said, "I'm not gonna remove the member from office. I'm not going to disqualify him." There was no restitution, even though there was an indirect interest. But I'm gonna ask for a reprimand and a suspension of remuneration. So those are the penalties that were imposed. These are all at the discretion of the court. Removal from office, the third one there, is no longer automatic if there's a finding of a contravention. So what happens if the judge is considering matters? It used to be that the only two things that the judge could consider, apart from whether there was a contravention or not, were what used to be the saving provisions, known as the saving provisions. They were named so because they would save a member from being removed from council, even though they may have contravened the Act. And those were in C, not in red. The contravention was committed through inadvertence or by reason of an error in judgment made in good faith. By the way, those two are mutually exclusive. Inadvertence means you didn't turn your mind to it. Error in judgment means you did turn your mind to it, but you made the wrong decision, but you made it in good faith. Most times, members will plead both at the same time, which means that they don't know which one it is. Which means that it's very easy to impeach their, their claim that it's inadvertence and an error in judgment. Because you either turned your mind to it or you didn't. You can't say you did both. So the court, though, has said, in exercising, sorry, the legislature has said, "A judge in exercising his or her discretion can consider, did the member take reasonable measures to prevent the contravention?" We don't know what those reasonable measures can be because there's been no decided decisions. But look at B. Disclosed the pecuniary interest and all relevant facts known to him or her to an Integrity Commissioner, asked for a request and acted in accordance. I'll tell you, you cannot insulate yourself more than that. So if I told you, you don't have a pecuniary interest and you relied on that, I may be wrong, but the court clearly can't turn around and blame you if I've made an error. So I'll tell you, 99% of the time, if you got advice from me and I've told you, well, apart from saying to you, "You can't do it because you have a pecuniary interest." But I said to you, "Yeah, you have a pecuniary interest and you have an exception that applies, you're good to go based on the facts that you've given me. If you, and if you've been truthful in those facts, the court will exercise its discretion and not penalize you and not remove you from office." So it's, it's, I think it's a really good thing that they added that in. And that just shows you the safeguards that going to the Integrity Commissioner for advice may give you. Appeals, there is a narrow as-of-right appeal. An appeal lies from any order. So if there's no order whatsoever, so no contravention found, no order imposed, that's the end of the story. There's no right of appeal. If there is an order, there is one more kick at the can. And that is that to the Divisional Court, not the And that is that to the judicial court, not the interior court of appeal. And that decision is final. Three times people have tried to go to the court of appeal and the court of appeal keeps saying, final means final. You can't appeal to the court of appeal. So what happens if there's a contravention? The matter is voidable. It's not void. So let's just say at your municipality, uh, there's a vote and the deciding vote, the vote that that may have tipped the the balance from a negative to a positive or the other way, uh was someone who uh had a pecuniary interest and ought to have disclosed that interest. Doesn't mean the decision is wrong and void. The decision stands unless the council itself decides to revisit it and can only do so within two years. So conclusions, and I know I've gone a little long, I thank you for your patience. Each conflict of interest case must largely stand on its own facts. The decisions are all fact specific and they're all fact driven. That means again, there is no bright line. All the more reason why you should potentially come to the integrity commissioner to get some sort of legal advice before, uh, and I am giving legal advice, I am a lawyer, but written advice to you that you do or do not have a pecuniary interest. Conflict of interest, not nearly as broad as the public thinks it is. In the M C I A, it's only financial, that's the key. There is a positive obligation on you as members to declare pecuniary interest and then to recuse yourself from participating in voting. There's a large number of exceptions in section four. There is a limited exception in section five, uh sub two point one. Remember, if there is a penalty that's being imposed or recommended and council's considering it, you're entitled to make your representations to council as to why the penalty shouldn't be imposed. But you cannot vote on the matter. There are significant sanctions, including removal from office, disqualification for up to seven years. And there are some saving provisions, including most importantly, the fact that you've sought the advice and been given the go ahead by the integrity commissioner. Let me say that there's been hundreds of cases and many of them are contradictory. Uh, so I'll leave with that, uh, warden and members of council. And I thank you for your attention. I'm happy to take any questions that uh anyone may have.
Okay, thanks, John. Questions from council or staff? Looking through Plexiglas, I can't always see hands up. Uh, Carol, councillor Hurlick, I think I see your hand up.
I know, good through you, Warden. That, that was good. It uh, eh, I, I've studied this myself. And it is great, there's no clear cut fluorescent line to follow. But I believe this was uh greatly absorbed here today and thank you. It's, it's interesting, that's for sure. The big thing you finished off there is, the key is, is it, it's financial, right? Like it, that's very important to remember. And I, I, I've heard of cases where people get it confused, you know, a code of conduct, but it had nothing to do with financial, right? And that's where it gets a little silly sometimes. I'm sure you've seen.
Other questions? Not seeing any. Uh, again, thank you, John. You know, they'd say you learn something new every day. And I honestly never knew that if I missed a meeting, I had to disclose at the following meeting. I honestly didn't know that.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you, that's, that's something that I, it usually wouldn't mean much, uh, Warden. But I'll tell you why it's important. I, I just told you, I am taking a case that's going to court. And um the, 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 the member, uh, I said, flagrantly disregarded the fact that she was told she couldn't vote and yet she still voted. I think between just us here today and anyone listening, that uh what's going to happen is the person's going to say, this, I, I, I did it once. Big deal, you can't remove me from office. And but in fact, I've now discovered that she actually missed a number of meetings where she ought to have disclosed pecuniary interest and she didn't do so at the next meeting. So I'm going to raise that. If one of the defenses is, she only did it once. So you know, these things do come back, uh, so please be, you know, be mindful. I understand for a very, very little statute, it's only fourteen, fifteen sections. Uh, my God, the amount of uh judicial consideration that it's received. It's in the hundreds of cases. It is very complex and sometimes you look at a case and you go, that supports my position. And then you find a case that says almost the exact opposite. So then you drill down and you go, but that's why they made the decision in this case. It was this one little fact, whereas it didn't exist in that case. So uh, Warden and members of council, including, thank you township council members for attending today. I, I really do appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. Again, I thank uh Lori and Tyler very much to, to do this. I think it's very important. And by the way, the fact that you did this in an open session and that you will post this video at, at some point, uh fulfills one of my obligations, really is to be uh educational uh of this whole realm to the public. And this fulfills that requirement without my having to do more. Uh, so I, I thank you for, for the uh opportunity today. And I'm really going to be interested in hearing what Debbie Wilcox says because she is such a knowledgeable person. So thank you.
Okay, thanks, John. So I guess, uh, yeah, I see Debbie on the screen.
Yeah.
Live?
Oh, you can ask her to un, unmute and go on video.
Are you there, Debbie?
Yes, I am.
Perfect.
We're ready.
I wasn't seeing a whole lot of movement on the screen and so.
There you go.
Now we're good. It's uh your turn to take over. Thank you very much. And I'd give you a bio, but I don't have one. It's on your, uh, everybody has actually got it on their, uh,
PowerPoint.
On their PowerPoint. Okay, take your way.
Is that good? Everybody got it on their screen?
Yep.
Okay. I'll go a little bit uh about myself, just to give you a little bit of uh background. So you understand kind of, kind of my knowledge and, and as John said, John and I, I enjoyed John's presentation. So thank you for letting me sit in. Um, I spent over thirty years in local government. Um, mostly as municipal clerk. I took early retirement and I was the director of legislative services for the region of Durham. So I have over twenty years in the local level and about nine at the upper tier. So I do understand both um levels of government. Um, I started my own company and, and have kept very busy. This is my fifth presentation similar in the last couple of weeks with local government. So it's important to, to go through. I am a professional registered parliamentarian and probably the only clerk in Ontario that I'm aware of. There may be one other um that has that designation. It's extremely hard to get. So I'm a bit of a governance nerd when it comes to parliamentary procedure. So I hope you enjoy this. I'm going to go over some basics of parliamentary procedure. I'll skip through that. Um, I went through some of your meetings, so I'm going to go highlight kind of things that I think you can look to improve. Not like you run your meetings extremely well. And uh we'll go from there. So here's what I hope you get out of that. I want to go through the meeting principles. And there is meeting roles and responsibilities. You as a member of council, there's the meeting principles that usually are in your procedure bylaw. I'm going to give you ones that I like. Gain an understanding of parliamentary procedure because parliamentary procedure for any council, it's a team building tool. So if council or any board committees, and I've trained thousands, if none of the members are understanding the basics of parliamentary procedure, you're going to have um some functional dis, it's not going to work as well for you because your role as council is to get the agendas, get the recommendations and make decisions. And those decisions are approved by bylaw. That's your role. So I want you to learn the rules and tools to be confident in your meetings. We're going to go over what I call the seven building block motions. Believe it or not, in seventy percent of the meetings, three motions are used. But if you learn these seven, you're going to be really proficient in your meetings. Then I want to go over, overview some motions and voting. And then I'm also going to go over some, you know, if you're in a meeting, this is the motion you use. So we're going to cover how to plan and prepare for your meetings, which is super important. Read your agendas. I have actually been in council meetings as the clerk. Went ten minutes before the meeting, the wifi crashed because all the members downloaded their agendas. So read your agendas. I want to go over the care models for meetings. It's one that I really encourage boards and committees, councils to look at. The role of the presiding officer. If you don't have a, a strong presiding officer, sometimes your meetings are going to go off track. And I was just with a, a council yesterday just dealing with all of them and how to chair a meeting because their meetings are just going way too long. So we'll go over some tips on how you as a member and also as a presiding officer can facilitate a meeting. Going to go over present and debate motions, what motions to use and when. And then, as I said, we're going to go over those seven building block motions. So here's the overall goal. Overall goals of shared decision making are to achieve good decisions, to achieve them together and to do so at a comfortable pace. According to Stephen Rogelberg, he just wrote a, a new book called The Science of Meetings. He's a professor at University of Virginia. He said, most people retain in a meeting within the first fifty minutes. Then it goes down, so they'll retain ninety percent. Then it goes down to seventy percent. So if you've got a long council meeting and you are saving your important items to the end of the agenda, everybody's attention's not going to be a hundred percent. So what makes a great meeting? One of the key goals, you want to develop the confidence of working together to achieve a great meeting. You're well into your term now. You should be um comfortable working together. And I always say there's three things I look for. If I was the clerk or the presiding officer, you as a member, you want to look at meeting objective achieved, which means are you reading, getting the decisions done on your agenda? Minimum amount of time? And participants feel a sensible process has been followed. So that means everybody feels their voice has been heard. It's important that council makes the most of their time together as this is when your authority is exercised. And I know um John highlighted that. And the other thing, I want to make sure that your meeting is not legally constituted until you have that quorum. And so that's really important. And one thing, if you happen to be a chair or a member or a member and you notice there's not quorum, it's your obligation to let the presiding officer know. But if you're in the meeting and you notice there's not quorum, if you happen to be the presiding officer, remember the acronym F A R M. Means if you've lost quorum, you want to fix the time to adjourn. You want to adjourn recess? Or you're going to take measures to get quorum? Which means, you know, if you're physically in the room and everybody's just stepped out for a moment, you want to make sure everybody, everybody gets back on track. Quorum's cru- crucial. Here's meeting principles that um I like. They're out of the, a procedure book by Jim Lockree. They're not as detailed as uh Robert's Rules. Robert's Rules is, is very extensive. I encourage councils to adopt the meeting principles that work for your council, that also work for the culture of your council. So I like these ones. The majority must be allowed to rule. That's why you have majority vote. Then minority have rights that must be respected. When you lose the right for minor, minorities and minority vote, that's when you'll see a two third vote. So if you are limiting debate, it requires two thirds vote because you're taking someone's right away. So that's a little rule to remember. Members have a right to information to help them make decisions, which means you want reports that are on the agenda that are thorough, concise and provide you with all the information. I teach the report writing course for AM C T O to local councils or to a staff. And I always say to them, in the reports, you want to make sure that staff have every question that you can think they may ask, that member council may ask, should be in that report. Courtesy and respect are required. That's just, that's just a quorum. And it's, it's okay to be kind in these meetings. But it's also okay to have difference of opinions. Any council that kind of rubber stance everything, I don't think that's good for your community. I like the idea that you can debate, but you debate it with respect. And I'm going to show you some tools if things, you know, digress. All members have equal rights, privileges, obligations, and members have a right to an efficient meeting. Okay, so that's the meeting principles I always like to govern by. So here's the role of the chair. So the role of the chair is actually the presiding officers. So they are facilitating things similar to what the warden's done. It's you're facilitating the meeting to make sure that the decisions are made. Sets the tone for the meeting and leads by example, welcomes all members, provides leadership facilitation. So if you're stuck on something and you need some advice, you know, you can ask the presiding officer. Presiding officer encourages participation. It's good to hear from everybody and all, there's some tools at the back that I'll, at the end of the presentation, we'll go over. And sets the agenda for the desired outcomes. And what I mean by an example of that be, just say you've got a really big meeting, you've got a lot of delegations. The chair could explain to the delegations how the meeting process is going to go. Communicates decisions and next steps. I've watched a few of your meetings. I think this goes really well. When you're doing virtual meetings, it's super important to say, repeat numerous times where you are in the agenda, what item you're dealing with and the recommendation and that you're moving on to the next item. Because when members of the public watch it or perhaps watch it later, they want to understand where you are and what you're dealing with. And the role of chair assigns responsibilities and action items. So that's the chair. Now, the role of the member. You have to understand your agenda and purpose of your meeting. I hope you're going to understand your purpose for your meeting. You're an elected official. You want to contribute insights to the agenda and items. So that means read the agenda, ask questions. Sometimes you may need to seek clarity from staff before the meeting and make sure you're understanding the report. You want to contribute to a positive, safe atmosphere. I think that's really important. And as John um provided some examples, um, what I, the training I did for council yesterday was um a lot of, they weren't happy with how the meetings were going, but they were talking amongst themselves outside of the meeting instead of speaking to each other. So you have to remember to speak to your peers. What I always tell council is, once that agenda is produced, you own the agenda. You own the agenda, you own your behavior. Okay, so we're going to go over kind of methods that you can kind of, if you're um unsure about things and how to get the attention of the presiding officer, techniques to use. You have the opportunity to present your ideas concisely. And that's why I always recommend the care model. And we'll go over that two slides up from here. It's the role of staff. They are to provide you with detailed, comprehensive reports. If you've, as members of council, find the report is not sufficient, and I watched a couple of meetings, you did refer one report, you refer it back to staff for further clarification. That's what you have to make the decision. You want to make sure you have all the details. Prepare well laid out agenda, agenda. You have an excellent agenda format. I went through the agenda, a few of them, well laid out, um, meets all the requirements. It's available electronically. It's easy for the public to find it. Provide step by step meeting support. Now, when I say step by step meeting support, it means um providing you, the, the presiding officer may need some advice. That's their role. It's um, if you were going to, say you want to present a motion and you want to get it clarified, you can go to the clerk before the meeting and just say, I want to make sure some um chairs, presiding officers, like a meeting script written out for them. That may happen. And staff carry out the council decisions. So they'll do that by, once you've had your motion and then it's, you have the motion before you. Once it's passed, it's a resolution. It's then enforced by a bylaw. And then staff will action it according to that. So here's what I call is the care model. It calls on participants in meetings to be clear, concise, adaptable, respectful and exact. And um I know when I've, when I was the clerk, I had these little, had them made up just to have you on your desk to kind of make sure during any discussion, carefully formulate your ideas. And you know, sometimes, you know, you can get. And you know, sometimes you know, you can get frustrated by the way things are going. And I will say, do the five, four, three, two, one rules. Put your hands on the desk of five, four, three, two, one, focus. Adaptable, be flexible and willing to adapt your view. That's the whole part of discussion. You may be going into that meeting and say, here's my opinion on it. And then your opinion can change. Now, we'll talk about that if you've had, if you've moved the motion and there's. Something you need to be aware of, if you do change your opinion. Respectful, that's standard. It's what, it's common sense. It's always be respectful of others. And exact means to make comments that are specific to the topic at hand. Remember to, and that's the job of the presiding officer. Things start going off track. The presiding officer will bring you back on track. Say we're dealing with this item. And that can happen. That can happen quite easily. This is, I'm actually mentoring a group of, of a number of mayors that I'm training, coaching them on how to be better chairs. And these are one of the things I find, the biggest thing is, the number one fear of people is public speaking. And number two is how to combat your fears in a meeting, your nerves. And it's always just breathe, take a breath. You look at your audience, smile, you put your hands on the desk. And to focus is when you do the five-second rule, five, four, three, two, one, regroup. It does, it does work, believe it or not. So simple, but it works. The other thing is active participation on everyone in council is necessary to make good decisions. And that means that's making sure everybody collectively has a voice at the table. Not the stronger voices and the presiding officer shouldn't choose favorites. It's making sure everybody. You know, you go through the speakers list and make it fair to everybody. So here's the discussion at meetings. This is kind of the parliamentary governing rule, guidelines. Is speak once and allow everyone to speak. Try not to repeat yourself. Where I find it really goes off track is when there's a number of delegations. And every member council feels they have to speak on a delegation. You don't have to speak. It's just, don't speak for the sake of speaking, just speak when you add value to the table. Or if another member of council spoken before you and has brought up a number of issues. You'll say, if it's your turn to say, I, my answer, my questions have been answered by the previous speakers. Just to keeps the meeting flowing and try not to dominate the discussion. And to be honest, I did go through a few meetings and I didn't see any domination or anything like that in your meetings. And again, I mentioned this before, team built, procedure by law is team building tool. Everyone commits to the basics and meetings shouldn't be a waste of time. Because you can go to a hundred meetings, ninety-eight of them are going to be really good. Those two that are really bad are the ones you're going to remember. So it's hard. So here's some things to look at when you want to increase your confidence. Look at your knowledge, look at your proficiency and look at your style. So your knowledge is your rules. How do you handle things? Do you do your homework? Proficiency, reviewing the agenda. Have you got all your facts and figures? Have you determined that you can make a decision based on the information you have? And your style is basically how you debate, how you're respectful in your manner in the chambers. So I'm talking fast. I hope things are going well. We're going to go right into the rules. So I know you're probably tired from zooming so long. It's all about the rules, but you know, why have them? And I will tell you right from the start. Your procedure by law, your rules should be your last resort. They really should. You should be able to use your rules and use your meeting. As through common sense, you know, is it, is this respectful debate? And I also use them as a last resort. There is some municipalities that I'm working with that use the rules constantly. And it's really slowing down their meetings. So try and use them for really key reasons. So really, you have the rules that business can be conducted in the most effective manner in the least amount of time. But you're also required to have a procedure by laws, as John has mentioned. And I'm a firm believer, your procedure by law should be reviewed every term of council. It may be just a quick review to say, are things working? What hasn't worked? Where do we need to tweak? The last couple of bylaw changes, of course, have been legislative. You've had to put a number of things into your procedure bylaws. That are legislated. Virtual meetings being one of them. All persons at a meeting have an obligation to obey the orders of the presiding officer. That's the role of presiding officer is to keep things in check. It's not up to the staff to keep things in check. The staff can certainly provide guidance to the chair. You know, I used to always make sure as the clerk, I was as close to the chair as I possibly could be to provide notes or guidance. And I've been fortunate in my career that I had some really good chairs, regional former. The late Regent Roger Anderson was probably one of the best chairs at the region that I've ever experienced. He could manage a thirty-member council quite, quite well. This parliamentary framework is from the National Association of Parliamentarians. This is kind of the framework that they say is good for decorum and discussion. That the remarks are relevant to the topic at hand. So when they say topic at hand, it's that. Motion that has been moved and seconded, that's what you're dealing with. Members may not speak about motives of other members. That's not appropriate parliamentary language. No arguing, no inflammatory language. And this is the role that the presiding officer is going to say, you know. Out of order, please speak on topic. That's what your presiding officer is going to do. A member may not speak against the motion. Now, I know I mentioned this early about. You know, your opinions can change during the discussion. A member may not speak against their motion, but they can vote against their motion. There's a big distinction there. So if during the discussion, say you've moved it and seconded. Now, a seconder doesn't have to agree with the motion. A seconder is basically just saying, yes, I agree that that topic should be discussed. So I'm going to second the motion. So you can't speak against the motion if your mind is changed, but you certainly can vote against it. A member may not explain their vote while voting. So if you're about to vote, you say, I'm voting because no, that's not appropriate. Parliamentary use. A member may not criticize a prior action of the group, which means once council has made that decision, it's the decision of council. And it's important to support that council decision. And member just supports the group. Okay. So here's some tools to help you debate wisely. Everything goes through the chair, which is what you've been in doing today from what I've been seeing. You get the chair's attention to be added to a speaker's list. If you're a chair of any meeting, it's good to keep speaker's list. Participate, don't ramble. It's sometimes hard. And that's why I say, do your homework before. Read your agenda, make your notes so that you can be concise at your meetings. Because you want to make insightful remarks at the right time, not every time. You don't have to speak all the time. You want to confine the remarks to the merits of the question. That's the motion at hand. Where I see this sometimes goes off track is if you've got a main motion, an amendment, and amend the amendment. If the amend, the amendment is on the floor, that's what you confine your remarks to. Not to the main motion, you're speaking to the amend the amendment or the amendment. Sometimes that can get off track. And then your procedure by law will outline how long you can speak to. I was working with municipality yesterday and they've actually changed their bylaw to say, a member can ask, ask three questions. And they can ask it in two different rounds, which it's going to be, I'm going to keep an eye on that, see how that works. And you have an obligation to understand the rules that your meetings are governed by. So I want to go through some motions and amendments here. And just talk a little bit about the different types of motions. Some of it may be, yes, I already know all this, but it's important just to understand it, just to get a, just an overview. You do not need to know how every motion is classified, whether it's a subsidiary or privileged or an incidental. But these are the categories under Robert's rules. They're either, main motion is your lowest form. You have subsidiary and I'm going to explain, I'm going to provide you with the definition just to give you context. Privileged, incidental, and motions that bring a question back. Quite often with the last one, motions that bring a question back, it's not easy to do. And that's the reason Roberts has done, because once a council or a board, anybody's made a decision, it shouldn't be easy to keep on doing it. And quite often you'll see in procedure bylaws that once council has made a decision. Perhaps it can't be discussed for another six months. There may be a timeline within your procedure by law. I didn't check that in your bylaw, I'm afraid. Okay, so here we go. Each motion has a rank. Okay, so there's ranking motions and there's non-ranking motions. There's thirteen ranking motions and I can't offhand remember how many non-ranking motions, but I'll go through those with you. So each motion has a rank and the precedent of motion. And that's why you're going to have. Does the motion need a second or can it be debated? Can it be amended? What is the vote to pass? Is it majority? Is it two-thirds? Those are the things you need to keep, be aware of. So a main motion introduces business. So when you have an item on the agenda with a recommendation. You move and second it, that's the main motion. A subsidiary helps you treat or dispose of the main motion. So for example, that'd be something like refer. Assisting in disposing of it. It's used to change the main motion. That's what a subsidiary motion is. A privileged motion, they don't relate to any pending business and they have a high priority. So again, I told you the farm, the fix the time to adjourn. Those are privileged motions. Fix the time to adjourn, adjourn recess. It's not the pending business, but they have high priority. Your incidental motion, they change the procedure for handling the pending business, but do not change what is being considered. That would be point of order, request for information. And I'm going to go into a little more details in some of those, just a few slides on. And again, then you have your motions that bring a question back. That'd be, you know, reconsideration. Discharge a committee is not used too often. That perhaps you've given something to a committee and they haven't got the work done and you want to deal with it. You're going to bring that question back to council. So we're going to go over, what is a motion? It's a proposal by a member council that the group takes certain action. Now, this is where, when you're doing virtual meetings, it's really important to articulate. I move that item A dealing with, be very specific. Because it's important for the members of public to understand where you are in the agenda. Or anybody coming in halfway through your meeting to understand where you are in the agenda. These are the three must-know motions. Whenever, I've created a program for, mostly for your advisory boards and committees, quite often volunteers. You know, they're, they're not as strong with some of the, the motions, the amendments, how things work. Seventy percent of your meetings have these three motions. And it's your main motion, your amendment, and amend the amendment. And how I teach debate teams. And one of the things I always say to them, think of a pyramid. And if you, you have to explain things to anybody. So when you make the motion, right here, your main motion is the lowest ranking. Then you have an amendment and amend the amendment. So you've made the motion going up the pyramid. But the vote is the opposite. The vote goes down the pyramid. So the chair would start with the amend the amendment, then the amendment, and then the main motion. Which I know you're all proficient with, but it's a good way to, to learn and also to explain it to anybody. Main motion introduces business, focuses council on that specific item, that agenda item. What does it do? An amendment, it changes the motion. You can insert, add, subtract. The only thing you have to remain is you have to remain germane to that main motion. So you can't introduce an amendment that is totally contradictory to the main motion. Your chair will rule you out of order. And amend the amendment. So you can have a main motion, amendment, and amend the amendment. You can't have anything above that. You have to deal with the amend the amendment first. Everybody would go back to that pyramid, then the amendment, and amend the amendment. So the amendment is a primary amendment. The amend the amendment is a secondary amendment. Can't be amended, modifies an amendment. This can be confusing sometimes, that people think you're actually amending the main motion. You're actually amending the amendment, which will then in turn amend the main motion. Confused? No. So how do you modify? Again, you add, strike out, substitute. That's how you're modifying germane to the main motion. Okay, this is my pet peeve with a lot of councils and I'm going to put my two cents in for you. There's no such thing as a friendly amendment. Doesn't exist. It still has to be open to debate and voted on formally. I know ninety percent of the councils that I work with. Use friendly amendment to tweak a motion. It's not the best practice to get into. And so I encourage you just to remember that a friendly amendment is open to debate and should be voted on formally. I want to go over the seven building block motions with you. Now, the three that we went over, main motion, amendment, and amend the amendment are part of that seven building block. So here's your lowest rank and lay on the table, which, this can be confused. This is last one, is the most misused motion ever. So you, your seven, what, and Robert, Robert's rules doesn't call them building block. That's my term. I call them the building block motions. It's the way I train. I find people remember them. Main motion, amendment, amend the amendment, refer to a committee, postpone to a definite time. Call the question and lay on the table. So we're going to go over those. And you may not use some or all of these. So again, here's the pyramid of precedence. Now, there's thirteen in the full ranking, but I prefer to just focus on the seven. Which means you are making the motion up, but the vote goes down. So if you have a main motion on the floor. Someone calls refer to committee, the chair will have to deal with the referral first. Okay. Postpone, definitely, we'll go over that, but it basically means you're postponing that item to a specific time. So if you've got an item on the agenda, perhaps it's a snowstorm, the delegation hasn't appeared. They're delayed or they can't make it. You want to put, maybe postpone an item to another agenda. We're going to go over call the question too, and because that sometimes can cause concern. So refer to a committee. It's a motion to send a pending question to committee. You should specify a time in which a committee is to report back. If you just refer a matter to staff, I, and I know as a staff member, I always liked having a date that I had to work to. It's, sometimes you can't put a date, but ninety-nine percent of the time, try and at least put an expectation. Can be used for a committee to investigate a matter more thoroughly. You know, for example, if you were, had an item and you wanted one of your advisories, say heritage advisory committee to review something. You can refer it to them, give them a specified time that they report back to you. So, or you refer to staff. That's a common, common thing that happens. Now postpone to a definite time. It's a, it's a motion to decline, to take a position on a pending motion. Specify the time to when it's going to be postponed. But it can be debated as far as its own merit, which means like, why are you delaying it? What is the purpose? That's why you're postponing it to a definite time. If you happen to ever use or have the motion postponed to indefinite time. That means the member who's moving that wants to kill that motion. That's, it just takes it off the books. Lay on the table. This, as again, this is the most must, misused motion. Tabling actually means within that meeting. It's a motion to set a main temporarily to accommodate something else. So you may have been dealing with an item that, that late delegation is all of a sudden shown up at your meeting. So you want to go back to that item, you table that matter temporarily in that meeting. That's what that means. So as I was explaining to one member of council who. That's what that means. So as I was explaining to one member of council who was struggling with, I said, it's like taking your agenda binder, that taking that report out, putting it in at the table in the middle of the room. Three quarters way through the meeting, okay, you can deal with that. You go and grab that report back. It's within that meeting. Otherwise you use the postpone to a definite time. That's the proper process to use. Now call the question. It's a motion to close debate and vote immediately. But one thing I always like to make sure that everybody's clear of is you have to make sure that you have the, the chairs, the presiding officer has given you the floor. You can't just simply call it and someone's in the middle of discussion. But it does close your debate. And it's requested by one member who believes it's time to stop debate. So remember when I said if someone's rights are taken away, that's why it's a two thirds vote. Because you're taking someone's right away to debate. So that's why you call the question can't be debated, can't be amended. And that's where, you know, it's usually after lengthy debate and people just want to get that question wrapped up. And that's really, um, that I would say was used a lot at the regional level. We use the call, call the question got used a lot. Because sometimes, you know, you just, you get off on discussing it over and over again. So here's those seven main motions, lowest motion. Amendment, amend the amendment. So if you can learn these, you'll manage any type of meeting you go to, refer to a committee, postpone to a definite time, call the question and lay on the table. I want to go over the ranking and I, and I also want to go over a couple of specific motions that I noticed just from a couple of meetings that I want to kind of highlight with you. Remember I said there was thirteen motions under Robert's rules, the ranking motions are, these are their stick thirteen ranking motions. Main motion, um, limit or extend debates. That's where you're going to use your two thirds vote. Call for the orders of the day. I've never seen it in an Ontario procedure byla. It basically says to the presiding officer, stick to the agenda. That's what that means. Question to privilege is not used very often. I'm going to go over that a little more. Uh, recess and adjourn. And again, if you lose your quorum, use, use your acronym farm. So here's your non-ranking motions. They're procedural in nature. And these are proceed ones, suspend the rules, uh, withdraw a motion. That's not done too often, uh, but sometimes there is a reason to withdraw a motion. Uh, your point of order, we're going to go over that a little, um, further on and put that on as a separate slide, but one thing I want to say about point of order. You don't move a point of order. Okay. It's you don't move it. You're raising a point of order. Oh, I've got a timer on there for some reason. Um, parliamentary inquiry is simply asking the chair, um, a question. Division of question is basically if you have four parts of a recommendation, you want to deal with each part separately. And appeal the decision. That's where sometimes if you have a point of order, you may have appealed the decision of the chair. That's some of the things that may come up. So I wanted to go over point of order because I, I went through some of your meetings. A point of order is not raised to staff. A point of order is raised in the meeting to the presiding officer. So you as a member, if you have a concern with anything, you're going to raise a point of order. And a point of order is a claim that something procedurally is being done incorrectly. You can interrupt the speaker. That's one of the motions where you can interrupt a speaker. It must be made at the time of the breach. So soon as it happens, you have to call a point of order. No second or no debate, no amendment, no vote. The presiding officer rules in this. That's a point of order. And I, you know, I will ask through the chair. I'm sure we'll do questions at the end. So here's a point of privilege. Now they are not used. I will say it's not used very often. Um, point of privilege, personal privilege is probably one of the rarest motions that is used. Um, point of privilege relates to the health, safety and integrity. So points of privilege, timely and urgent, they interrupt proceedings. And a point of general privilege refers to everybody. Point of personal privilege ref- refers to one person. So that's the different, the major, what I, I will see more often is point of order. That's kind of the one whereas if, um, you're not happy with the discussion, for example, say you're in a meeting. Um, one member is talking about something that you feel is inappropriate. You're going to get the presiding officers' attention and go point of order. Um, I, could the member speak to the issue at hand and not the person? And that's why I always say speak to the issue at hand, not the person. And it's a point of order would be the one that's used, but you have to do it at that meeting. And again, pointed first privilege, they are very rare. Um, pointer general privilege, I would say the one who will won't be used. I would say if you're in a meeting and say there's excessive noise outside of the meeting or you can't hear, you're going to go, could I have a point of privilege? That noise is really bothering me and I can't hear what's going on in the meeting. It's your health and safety type of thing. So I want to go over what motions to use, just to give you an idea. So if you want to ask a question, um, again, you're going through the chair. It's going to be a parliamentary inquiry or a request for information. So you're dealing with an item. And, uh, you know, staff's done the presentation, you're at the debate part, but you really would like some additional information from staff. That's called a request for information. You go to the chair, the chair can either answer it or, or the chair can direct it for staff to respond. Parliamentary inquiry is simply asking the chair what motion perhaps that you use. Say, do I do it as a referral or how should I handle that? And that's all done through the chair. Perhaps if you want to change name, location, amount or other variable in a motion, again, remembering germane to the main motion. You're going to use amend, oh, that should be amend the amendment. I don't know how many times I've used this side and I've just noticed that. Amend the amendment. If you want to extend debate, so perhaps you've had, um, everybody's had their time, then you're going to do a motion to extend the limits of debate. If you want to lay action until later and then in the same or the next meeting, you can postpone to a certain time. I usually use tabling in the same meeting or postpone to a certain time is you're setting a definite date and time. If you disagree with the chair's ruling or decision, or perhaps something that's going on, you're going to go appeal the decision of the chair. Or you're going to do point of order. If you revoke, want to revoke on something voted on in this meeting, that's a reconsider motion. Again, they should be used very sparingly because that's if anytime I'm having to do a parliamentary opinion, it's because of how a council's handed to reconsider motion. So be very cautious on reconsidering and rescinding. And if some, if a rescinding motion comes up, you're actually wiping that recommendation off the boat, books. And a reconsider can only be done if some action hasn't been taken on it. So for example, if you've passed a tender for a certain item and that person has been notified at the tender, you can't reconsider that motion. Again, stop debate, you're going to call the question. In, if you look under Robert's rules, it's called previous question, but we use call the question here. And if you want to resume considering a motion that was laid on the table, you're going to take from the table or lift it from the table. Violation of the rules, that's where you're going to go point of order. You know, if you're unhappy about how something's going, you simply get the chair's attention, point of order. You're going to state your case and the chair is going to rule. And that's what a point of order is. If you want to repeal, again, we've done rescind or amend something previously adopted. Again, this is very rarely used in our procedure bylaws. Interrupt business or perhaps you want to suspend the rules. I am very cautious using suspend the rules. Um, I'm just helping another municipality that they did a motion to suspend the rules and introduced a new item of business. Be very cautious in introducing new items of business because you have that open accountable transparency rules. Um, you have to let the public know. In this case, what this municipality did is they had a delegation, they listened to the delegation. It was about playground equipment. They listened to the delegation, they suspended the rules, they introduced a motion to have the playground equipment removed at that meeting, no notice to the neighborhood, just based on three delegations. So what happened, of course, it created a bit of a public relations nightmare because the playground equipment had been donated by, um, a charitable group. So what they should have done is referred the matter to staff to report back at the next meeting. And then it's clearly on the agenda. So here's some frequently asked questions. I'm going through this quickly, so I hope we're good. Must debate on a motion, stop immediately as soon as any member calls the question. And I, I did highlight this earlier. A member must first obtain the floor. That means you have to be recognized by the chair. That's a common misconception. Chair must then move the previous question, which means call the question. They take the vote on calling the question. If it's lost, debate resumes. If call the question is approved, then the main motion that the council was just dealing with is then on the floor. So it's actually a two-pronged vote. And I can see a couple of you nodding. That's how you guys do it. That's good. If a motion has been rejected, can members bring the same motion before the members to vote on it again? Usually it cannot be brought up again at the same meeting unless someone who voted on the prevailing side, the winning side moves to reconsider. Now, when you think winning side, that means was it approved? No, if the winning side was the defeated side, then they are the prevailing side. Okay. Is it always in order to move to table a motion to the next meeting? This question, as I've mentioned earlier, confuses, lay on the table with the motion to postpone to a definite time. The purpose of the table motion is to enable you as the council, you're a board by majority vote without debate, just to lay it aside temporarily. You know, perhaps the staff member who's going to be, um, presenting that report hasn't arrived yet or isn't available. Those are type of things that you would, um, table it just to maybe later in the meeting. How do you deal with friendly? Again, I'm going to make my two cents worth again. Any amendment friendly or otherwise, this is that a rubber shows must be adopted by the full body, either by a voter unanimous consent. Um, when a main motion is multiple parts, is it possible that it can be broken down? Yes, a motion to divide the question would be used. What motions cannot be rescinded or amended? Here we go. If the action has been taken that cannot be undone, if any action has been taken. If part of the action has been executed, then the unexecuted part can be rescinded or amended. The, it's, I very rarely seen that done. The only time I saw the unexecuted part was the timing of a project was, went back and it was amended. If the original business is in the nature of the contract and the other party has been notified, no, you can't change it. If a resignation has been acted upon by the board and the person has been notified or was present. That can't, that's usually, you know, boards, if they're going to resign from a board and they've done it and then they want you to resend it, no. Can a member speak against the motion they moved? A member who moved the main motion can vote against the main motion, but they cannot speak against the motion. Is it permissible? And sometimes perhaps if you want to speak, then that's where you're going to do a withdraw your motion. Is it permissible to request to withdraw your motion? Yes. Once you obtain the floor, a motion can be withdrawn anytime up until the vote is taken. But the chair would have to make sure that they reach out to the members and say, do you have any objection to the motion being withdrawn? There's an objection, then you have to take a vote. And again, I've gone through that really quickly. We're going to go through the steps to make a motion. And this is you all, you all do this. But I think it's really important during virtual meetings. Again, I'm going to highlight so people understand where you are. Under correct parliamentary law, there's actually a six step process. Member makes a motion, another member seconds the motion. Chair states the question. Robert's rules all uses the word question, but it's basically the motion or the recommendation that is on the agenda before you. And you as a, a member would say, the chair would say it's moved and seconded that highlights what you're dealing with. Cause sometimes you could be heavy into debate. You've had amendments, it's been a long night and I think we've all had that deer in the headlights look where we go, okay, what are we dealing with? I'm, you know, it's easy, it's easy for that to happen. You then debate the motion, you obtain the floor always through the chair. Chair puts a question to a vote and always says it's on the adoption of such and such. And then the chair announces the result to the vote. That's why it's really important to, um, have a strong presiding officer, any, any type of meeting you're in. So here's some tools for you as not only the meeting chair, but as the participants. If this occurs, what can you say? Digression. So everybody's going off on a tangent, doing their own thing. This is where you as a member could say point of order, can we please get back on topic or can we please focus on the core issue, which is such and such. So you as a chair could say, can we please focus on item A of the agenda, which is, and that's gets that digression nicely, gets the digression back on topic. Interruptions. Again, point of order, can we have one person speaking at a time? You know, this can happen mostly a lot of the times in, you know, in-person meetings, everybody's talking one-on-one. And sometimes the chair is going to have to say point of order, use the gavel. Can we have one person speaking at a time? Or can we please hear people out? I think that's important. The chair will sometimes do that. Regional chair Anderson would simply switch off everybody's mic. That was one of the methods he used. Personal attacks. Again, it's your point of order. We should be focusing on issues, not people. And that's the key thing I'm always trying to say. Focus on the issue, focus on the recommendation on hand, not people. Rambling. Here's some techniques to use. Can we please keep our comments brief? I'm concerned we may run out of time for significant issues later on. You know, you could, if the chair would say that, or if you're a member, you would just say point of order, can we please keep our comments brief? Repetitive debate. This is where a chair may say, are we ready to close debate and vote in this motion? Or this is where you could do move to close debate or I call the question. We don't use the most move to close debate much in our interior procedure by, bylaws. It's more call the question. And again, if there's a lot of side questions, the chair can say, can we please have one conversation at a time? Those are just nice respectful ways to say, hey, let's get our act together. Because as I said, you as council own the agenda, you own the agenda, you own the meeting. So that's important to really recognize. And here's a few, if you have unbalanced participation, this can happen. Um, you're well into your turn by now. Hopefully it's not happening. Usually I find it when you've got a new council, you've got some who maybe have never experienced being in a council meeting. And sometimes you may get that unbalanced participation and you don't want to center that member out. And this is where as a chair, as a, a member, you could just say, I'm wondering if we could hear from members who've not spoken. It's a nice way to say, you know, can we hear from you? If you have an unclear motion, um, sometimes it's, you know, you need to have that motion. Can we please have the motion repeated? Or, you know, something else, I'll move the amendment if it's an unclear motion. Unclear meaning, you know, you, the whole purpose of amendments and amend the amendment is actually to tweak that motion to make it be really good. So you are satisfied as member of council that that is the way you want it worded and the action is going to go from there. Just John will love this, I, that it's general education purposes. My, it's not legal or business advice. I am simply a professional registered parliamentarian who is a total governance nerd and loves parliamentary procedure. Okay, so how can, I'll leave it to the chair now. I'll put it back to the chair and finish my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much, Debbie. If I could maybe go up of shared screen. Okay, thank you very much, Debbie. If I could maybe go up of shared screen. Yeah, now I can see face again. That's great. Questions for Debbie. Comments? Counselor Casenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Thank you very much, Debbie, for your presentation today. I have a question about committees and committee work and reports from committees being brought back to council. As you know, probably in our model, it is most often that businesses generated from staff reports. But certainly I know that rules of order provide for committees to bring reports back to council. And how should we handle those both in terms of requirement of moving and seconding, which I think Robert's rules has some suggestions about and further receiving those in the meeting?
Well, first of all, take your, take the Robert's rule component out of it because you're guided by your procedure by law. Okay, so it may be slightly different than Robert's rules. So when you're talking about committees, are you talking about standing committees? Or are you talking about advisory committees to council? They're very different.
Generally speaking, the standing committees is where I'm interested.
Okay, so if normally I would suggest that you always have your terms of reference for your standing committees. Your standing committees, whatever parameters are established in your procedure by laws, how the committee should operate. And you see, yes, they are generated by staff reports, but sometimes you're going to have a notice of motion or a motion from a member of council at that committee that will then go before council. So that's your process. So it'll go through your standing committee to council. But it doesn't necessarily have to have a staff report. If you, that's why you have your majority vote. So if you have an item on your agenda or you put forward to notice the motion and it's received approval, then that goes through to council. And you're right about Robert's rules with standing committees, the under Robert's rules, you only need a mover. Depends how your standing committees. I always set up my standing committees, you know, I was clerk at Pickering and Whitby. We set up the standing committees with just a mover because you have a smaller council, you remember, you have a smaller participation. So when it goes to council is when you have your movers and your seconders. And I'm sorry, I didn't double check that in your procedure by law.
If I might ask one supplementary, then my further question then is because it's a report from the committee and the committee has considered and deliberated and made recommendation for the adoption of its report, does it actually need a mover or seconder?
Depends how depends how your procedure by law is written. But I will tell you ninety nine percent of the procedure by laws in Ontario, your report is moved and seconded and then members of council can pull an item out that they want to review. So say you've got a report of the finance committee, it's got twelve items on the agenda. The report is presented, but you as a member of council want to pillow item five, you have that obligation to do. Yeah, but I I'm pretty sure when you're by the, you have a mover and second around that report, but I'm Tyler may correct me, but I think that's the process.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? It takes me a second longer to get the whole screen scanned here. I'm not seeing any hands go up.
If I might warn, warn, warn the chair, if there's ever any questions, you're always free to email me. I provide just that for members of council and clerks, anytime you want to just discussion, you're free to email me. If you require a legal, a parliamentary opinion, that that's when I have to put things in writing.
Yeah, thank you very much. Again, like the first presentation, you always learn something new.
Good.
Really appreciate your presentation. So we don't have any other questions or comments. Everybody must be getting tired of sitting on Zoom. Anyway, thank you very much, Debbie, and to John. I see John's got his picture up. I think he was maybe still listening in. But thank you both for your presentation and we're going to move along in our agenda here. And the only thing we really have to do now is a motion to adjourn. And I can't imagine if I'll get any hands up for that. I see councillor Hurley, second by councillor Duncan. Any discussion? Those in favor? Daryl, did you have something?
Yeah, just a little off topic. As we leave here today and go through our day, I just want to point out that today is Holocaust remembrance stands to something we should take with us. And it was good, but it's pretty important and I wanted to put that in there. Thank you.
Any other comments? Those in favor of the motion on the floor to adjourn? I use Gary. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for your indulgence and it's been a bit long time sitting, but we learned a lot. So thank you very much.